Speaking.
One, two, three, four, A, A, back up, alright.
Okay, once again, I'd like to invite any members of the public who wish to speak to the commission during today's meeting to please read the view of the instructions posted on the redistricting website at drawyourcommunity.com. Please ask that individuals who wish to speak with the commission completed form in advance. However, all timely requests to speak from the public made at today's meeting either in person or by phone will be honored regardless of whether you have submitted an advanced request. I'd like to note for the record that the commission has received a total of fifty-four ecomments, three emails and one letter related to today's draft map, public hearing and regular meeting. The log of correspondence received, including comments that have been submitted through the community builder tool, has been updated and provided to the commissioners. It is posted on the commission's website. Correspondence received is posted on the website with today's meeting materials and the commission's log of ex parte communications has been updated on the commission website. Chair Bame.
Thank you, David. The next item on the agenda is the roll call. Let me just make sure everyone can still hear. David, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Before I call the roll, I'd like to note for the record that the commissioners are participating both in person and via teleconference, and as such, all votes will be taken by a roll call vote. I'll ask the commissioners to please say here or present when called upon. Chair Bame. Here. Vice Chair Catalina.
Here.
Vice Chair Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Here.
Commissioner Diaz. Commissioner Dostal.
Here.
Commissioner Hansen.
Here.
Commissioner Inman.
Here.
Commissioner Kruclia.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Potts.
Here.
Commissioner Russ.
Here.
Commissioner Servant.
Here.
Here.
With thirteen commissioners here, we do have a quorum, Chair Bame.
Thank you very much, David. Let me just apologize and request patience in advance because I think there's still some microphone issues while we're going to be working through. So you hear the echoes. We'll try to have those resolved very soon. Our next item is non-agenda public communication speakers. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on subject matters that were within the commission's jurisdiction, but not listed as items on today's agenda. The only actions the commission may take is a referral to staff to call up any questions or to request an item be added to a future meeting agenda. I would request that members of the public reserve their comments on current IRC draft maps and any other matters relating to mapping for agenda item five, which we will hold in just a few minutes. I'd also request that members of the public be patient with us if we hear that you are addressing a matter that is not within our jurisdiction. In other words, a redistricting matter related to a different jurisdictions, redistricting commission, be that the state of California or the city of San Diego or the city of Chula Vista. And we are grateful for the city staff letting us borrow the chambers tonight. Or many of the other redistricting commissioners in California will try to give you a pause and help you later to get, make sure your comments get to the right address. But for right now, this moment, this is for you to offer comments on items not in tonight's agenda, but still within our jurisdiction. That, David, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on non-agenda?
Thank you, Chair Bame. We did not have any requests in advance of today's meeting, but if anyone would like to address the commission under non-agenda public communication, the commission would welcome your comments. Those present, please come forward to the microphone. Those participating remotely, please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Don't see any movement in the chamber, but we do have one virtual hand. Kurt Warden, you have two minutes to address the commission. You may need to unmute yourself.
Thank you, commissioners. Just a quick note as I'm traveling right now. I would like to take note that you, what I saw in the district or redistricting email was a desire to increase the size of District Two under the planned proposal. I'm going to make a recommendation that you look at moving the community of Lincoln Acres into District Two as a possibility. Just as, just as an option, I think that we would be probably better represented in District Two than District One that we're currently in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public who would like to address the commission, either raise a virtual hand or come forward to the microphone? Not seeing any movement in the chamber, and I don't see any further virtual hands. That concludes public comment, Chair Bame.
Thank you, David. The next item is approval of the minutes from the IRC special meeting of October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. We will begin this item by hearing any public comment on minutes. David, are there any requests from the public to speak in this item?
Not in advance of today's meeting. However, if any member of the public would like to address the commission on the approval of the minutes, you're welcome to do so. Those present, please come forward to the microphone. Those participating remotely, please raise a virtual hand. Don't see any movement in the chamber, and I don't see any virtual hands, so that concludes public comment on this matter. Chair Bame.
Thank you, David. This is an action item that requires a motion before any discussion. Let me ask if there's a motion for approval of the minutes from October twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one, as included with the agenda materials. Commissioner Brown, thank you for the motion. Second, Commissioner Larson, thank you very much. Is there any discussion, including clarifications or corrections? I see co-vice chair Caterina, please.
Hi, David, and, and my fellow commissioners. I did notice, I think that Leila McDonald was missing from the item for participants. And, and I'm thinking if we could handle it the same way we did last time, if we could just have staff check and, and then correct it if needed.
So we'll take that on board. David, you have that okay?
Yes, we did check the transcript on that. She did come through on the phone, but she decided not to, to comment at that time. She reserved her comment for another time. So that's why she wasn't listed on that.
Very, thank you for that. I will also note, commissioners, that either for this one, and David, I don't know if this was too hard for this one, to move the speakers up ahead of the motions. So we go ahead and introduce that. Yeah, so co-vice chair Caterina noticed this, so all credit to her, thank you. You'll notice in the minutes that the list of those offering public comment on our draft maps was at the end of the motions. And it seems a better idea to put those speakers ahead because they are all offering comments on all the different maps, just for clarity's sake. So we'll be doing that correction in this set of minutes, and that will be the normal format going on without objection. Not seeing any other comments. David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, and I'll note that the commissioners' names will continue to be called in random order. Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Hansen?
Aye.
Co-vice chair Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Potts?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Commissioner Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Servant?
I will abstain from voting on the motion. I apologize for my absence at the meeting. I was unable to attend due to being in a car accident, so sorry for not being here, guys.
Thank you. Commissioner Kruclia?
Aye.
Co-vice chair Catalina?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Chair Bame, with Commissioner Servant abstaining, all other commissioners being present and voting aye, that motion passes.
Very good. Thank you, commissioners. We'll now move on to item five, the first IRC draft map, public hearing. Yes, this is what you and the audience have joined us for, so thank you again for coming, and those who are joining us virtually, and there's a considerable number of attendees. For this item, we first will hear an informational presentation on IRC draft maps five through eight, as well as any maps submitted by the public from the IRC's Demographer Flow Analytics. IRC draft maps, I'll note, were provided to commissioners and posted for the public on the IRC website, and of course, are also available in the lobby if you're here in person. Let me now turn to those Alex Strach. Alex, bash, sorry.
Chair Bame?
Yes, Alex, good?
Yes.
Please go ahead. Of course, yours.
Wonderful. I am sharing my screen now, so just want to get some confirmation that people are seeing that. Seeing some nods, great. So thanks for having us again tonight to go through the draft maps and the publicly submitted maps. I'm going to start with one just piece of housekeeping and mention that for these maps, the district numbers that you'll see going forward, they will not, will be assigned based on population overlap with the existing districts. However, that is not implemented tonight in these maps that we're reviewing, so that'll be true for the November thirteenth draft maps. So let's move first into draft map five, and I'm going to read the motion from the meeting on October twenty-first. This was from Commissioner Brown and seconded by Commissioner Hansen, and it was regarding draft map three. And two key pieces of information being to bring Escondido into District Five by extending it to include the residents west of I-5 and Carlsbad and Oceanside, or exchanging with Carlsbad completely. If more population is needed to go to the southern portion of District Five in the map, pick up more residents, including Ramona and Julian. Secondly, revise the coastal district to include communities east of I-5 that are associated with Solana Beach and Del Mar. So draft map five is what we see here in the colored polygons on the map. And I will go through in each of these maps that there are new data layers that are being used for reference purposes. I'll identify what they are, so we're all on the same page. So in this case, here, we have draft map three boundaries in a dark blue outline, so that we can see the source material of the motion draft map three, and then becoming draft map five here. So you can see those differences such as Escondido moving from District Four into District Five. Now, a quick reminder and a couple of key pieces of information along with these maps. On the right side here, we see the equal population criterion and what's called ideal population, simply the twenty-twenty population of the county divided by five, so that each district should be as close as possible to that ideal. That's what we see in the right side of the table, each district's population, how much it is over and under the ideal population, and then that deviation from ideal as percentage. The least populated and the most populated districts, deviation of four point two, four point two, and together eight point five, considering the rounding just slightly. That's our overall deviation or overall range, and we're looking to be as close to zero as possible, but definitely under ten percent. You see the ranges here, under five being, you know, most ideal, five to ten being acceptable, and over ten percent needing some work and improvement. So in this case, we have eight point five percent. And as we scroll through, we're going to zoom in on each of the districts and just understand some of the cities, census designated places and neighborhoods, communities that are part of each of these districts in each draft map. So first, District One includes Imperial Beach, National City, Chula Vista, South San Diego portions, and of course, Eastern County. And one other thing that changed in this draft map five for District One was ensuring that Capitan Grande Reservation is not split. And it was a change so that the reservation is wholly within District Four. So you can see how the reservation boundary is now completely within the, the purple or maroon District Four. District Two includes coastal areas from Coronado all the way north to Encinitas. And an important thing to point out as we're scrolling through and we're looking at some of the, the speaker notes here as I talk through each district, you see highlighted in bold, blue or purple, that's something that's specific to the motion. So within this motion, the coast district was to include communities east of I-5 that are associated with Solana Beach and Del Mar. That was done, we've extended the boundary of the green District Two, but only a small portion in order to stay true to the source map of draft map three and meet that equal population criterion. Because District Four is already underpopulated, you could only expand District Two so much. We will see examples in some of the other draft maps to follow where that boundary is extended, so there are kind of other options and ideas to think about where, you know, that boundary between this coastal district and what is District Four could be. But in this case, it was extended east of I-5 to capture a portion of the San De Gito Union School District. And we'll see different options in some of the other draft maps. District Three includes South San Diego and the BIPOC communities along Highway Eight, such as Spring Valley, Alcohone, La Mesa, Rancho San Diego, Lemon Grove, and Santee. And some of the things we're seeing on this map, I know it's a lot of, of line work here, so I'll just go through just a couple of items. We still have, you know, the, the districts for the draft planner and colored polygon, so yellow or, or orange being the central district here, District Three. The dark blue boundaries being draft map one, or, excuse me, in draft map three, of which this is based.
Alex, does it look like the real, right, where Alpine is cut into two different districts?
That's correct. This is an orange line representing a census designated place or CDP. So that is, yes, definitely good eye, something that can be, you know, revised just slightly here so that Alpine is completely within District One.
Okay, so there's no, there's no compelling reason you did that. It just, just came out that way. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, and that's a good reminder that, you know, the draft maps, there's going to be, you know, we're getting these as a good starting point, and of course, we can work around the edges on a lot of these things. And some of the metrics we see in the summary stats are understanding which municipalities or census designated places are split, and this would be notified. It's something that, you know, to easily be addressed. Couple of other quick things on the map are these green or teal boundaries. Those are, of course, are the municipalities. So Alcohone right here, and then the purple, light purple boundaries, those are neighborhood or communities that are part of the San GAS dataset that we are using to kind of identify some neighborhoods, such as, you know, University City or La Jolla. So on to kind of the, one of the main portions of the, this motion was moving Escondido from District Four to District Five, and then moving Carlsbad from District Five to District Four. So you can see how Carlsbad is now included in this District Four boundary, and that Escondido is included in District Five. District Four includes Carlsbad, Hawa'i, and Asian Community Corridor neighborhoods, such as Carmel Valley, near Mesa, and Kearney Mesa.
Alex, can I ask a question about the district numbers and colors on this?
Yes, of course.
Because just District Two has always been in the East County, and traditionally, right now, District Three was the coastal community, and District Four was the downtown San Diego district, and those numbers are all turned around.
Commissioner, I'm going to ask you and other commissioners to let us, let Alex get his presentation done. Then we'll hear from the public. Then we'll move on. We are in a public hearing right now. And so it, it, I, I'd want to allow a little flexibility with regard to a detailed question on the map that may not be visible to all on a technical level, along lines with Commissioner Chen at. Anything else, and I'm not trying to sing you, single you out, it's true for all the commissioners, but we are in a public hearing. It would be most appropriate to let Alex make his comments. Just to warn commissioners, we have some eighty members of the public wishing to make comments. And after that, I promise, we'll have a fulsome discussion on those and other perfectly legitimate issues, but we'll do that at the appropriate. Thank you, Alex. Please continue.
Thank you, Chair Bame. So on to District, sorry, excuse me, just a quick little follow-up on this. I want to make everyone aware that exchanging Carlsbad and Escondido between Districts Four and Five necessitates a connection between Carlsbad and the rest of District Four. So making that connection actually requires splitting the city of Encinitas or San Marcos. And that location I'm talking about is right here, where there's unincorporated county, and then it's either Encinitas right there or San Marcos right here, and there has to be that connection of Carlsbad to the rest of the district to meet that continuity criterion. So San Marcos was chosen because if I turn on aerial imagery, this is actually an area that's primarily non-residential, so it's going to not affect a splitting of San Marcos residents. So that's what was chosen in this scenario. And then if we move on to District Five, another part of the motion was ensuring that Highway Seventy-eight in East County is no longer a boundary line, splitting Districts Four and Five in this case, but rather a corridor. So to balance the population between District Four and District Five, District Four was given the census designated places of Ramona, Julian. You can see that here, how it's now wholly within that maroon district, San Julian, and that boundary now is above the Highway Seventy-eight center line, so that the whole corridor is included in the district. And with that, I will move on to the cities that are included in District Five. So here we have Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos, Escondido, Valley Center, being some of the census designated places in orange here, like Hidden Meadows, Fonsol, Fallbrook, and Camp Pendleton. So those all being included in District Five. Now, we're going to move on to draft map number six. That motion, maybe by Commissioner Inman and seconded by Commissioner Larson, is regarding draft map two. And they were hoping for draft District Three to use the Pana map for that specific district and extend up as far as possible into Linda Vista, try to expand the coastal area eastward, as discussed in the first motion. So that's widening it to the east along, past the I-5 in the area of Del Mar. And also, as the coastal district, district is widened, if possible, include all of Carlsbad. So again, we have this first map, draft map two boundaries in the dark blue, and we can see some of the changes, such as the coastal district here being expanded to the east. This is using the district that was submitted by Pana in yellow or orange here. This statistics for this map came out at six point eight percent overall deviation. And again, that's created by District Two having, you know, being over the ideal four point two percent. District One being under by two point six percent. And thus, six point eight percent, well within the range, so we can move on from there in terms of equal population and look at some of the districts individually. District One includes Imperial Beach, National City, Chula Vista, South San Diego, and a large portion of East County. Again, looking specifically at reducing the splits, whether it be between a municipality or a reservation. So again, making sure that the reservation was not split. In this case, though, it went completely to District One. So that's what we see here is this change. So District One also expands to include southeast San Diego and Granite Hills, Crest, and Harbison Canyon. So you can see here how District One in the blue now includes that southeastern San Diego neighborhood and up into Greater Golden Hill and other places mentioned here is the expansion north to include Crest and Harbison Canyon. And that's, of course, we'll get to this district, but this is the, the District Three that submitted by Pana in this case, and keeping it whole is necessitating those changes to make sure there's equal population between the districts. So District Two includes coastal areas from Coronado all the way up to Encinitas. And in this case, this motion as well, coast district to include communities east of I-5 that are associated, Solana Beach and Del Mar. So District Two was expanded to include the census designated places of Elephant Forest and Rancho Santa Fe. Also, the neighborhoods, planning areas of Carmel Valley and Pacific Highlands Ranch. And then you can see this boundary right here, we're looking at, it's more of this dash line here in blue. This is the San De Gito School District. So except for a small portion in Carlsbad up here, that whole school district kind of served as the boundary line to the east here, along with those census designated places and, and planning areas that I mentioned to expand District Two. And District Two also had to expand elsewhere to, to meet the ideal population or to approach the ideal population. So it also expanded eastward more to its south to include Kearney Mesa, Terra Santa, and Navajo, as you see here. So District Three represents the district that was submitted by Pana. And this is a list of the, the cities, census designated places, and some of the San Diego planning areas, community areas that are included. So that list here. I'll leave it on the screen. We'll see this a couple of times. I think one of the important things to point out here is that map, as it was I'll leave it on the screen. We'll see this a couple of times. I think one of the important things to point out here is that map, as it was submitted by Pana, was nearly perfect in its population. It was just about one, one and a half percent off the ideal. So that was left exactly as it was um based on the motion. And what that means is any districts that are adjacent to this district need to change so that the population is balanced. So those, that's kind of what necessitated, you know, kind of similar more major changes that weren't necessarily included in the motion, such as the expansion of District Two right here, or the expansion of District One to the north to include Crest. So District Four, that's this maroon purple color. District Four includes Santee, Poway, North County, Census Designing Places like Fallbrook and Valley Center. And a few of the, the Asian Community Corridor neighborhoods such as near Mesa, kind of here in the southwest. So what that leaves then for District Five, because of this dense population center, are, are these Highway Seventy Eight corridor cities of Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, and Escondido. You know, as well as just a small portion kind of north of Oceanside, that's to help reach that ideal population. With that, I'll move on to draft map seven. That's a motion from Commissioner Chen, seconded by Co-Vice Chair Garcia. And the motion approved um looking at draft map three and recombining um and keeping intact cities like Ramona and Julian along the Highway Seventy Eight corridor in East County. And also using the Pana district that was submitted. So here we're looking at draft map three boundaries in dark blue. Draft map seven in the colors, and you can see how things changed. Again, District Two expanding to the east. The Pana district in yellow or orange. Um, and then needing to reduce the size of District Four. In this case, the maroon. You can see on the right side, some of the statistics, overall deviation of seven point nine percent. And let's dive into the districts one by one. District One again includes Imperial Beach, National City, Chula Vista, South San Diego Neighborhoods, and a large portion of East County. Again, ensuring the reservation is in, completely in one district, in this case, District One. District One also expands to include Granite Hills, Crest, Harvest and Canyon. In this case, a little bit more as well, Winter Gardens, Lakeside, Eagleupthis Hills, and Central Unincorporated County. District Two, same as before, includes coastal areas from Coronado up to Encinitas. And to match what we saw in the last uh draft map, it expands to the east to include Elephant Forest, Ranch of Santa Fe. Basically, all of Sandeguita School District, except the portion that's within Carlsbad. As well as some of those community plan areas like Carmel Valley and Pacific Highlands Ranch. Key component of the motion was that District Three is represented by the district that was submitted by Pana. So again, we see that similar shape as we saw last time. Nothing changed from what was submitted. And so it includes the cities of Alcohone and La Mesa, Lemon Grove, and the additional um Census Designing Places and neighborhoods that are listed here, such as, you know, North Park and Balboa Park. And Canto. District Four then includes a central district. It includes the cities of Santee and Poway, Escondido, and neighborhoods such as Mira Mesa and Kearney Mesa. The other portion of the motion was to ensure that Highway Seventy Eight in East County is no longer the boundary line, but rather a corridor. So to balance that population between District Four and District Five, District Five in this case was given Ramona, Julian, San Diego Country Estates, and the rest of the corridor here along Highway Seventy Eight. District Five also includes Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, Valley Center, and the North County C D Ps you see here. On to draft map eight. There's a motion by Co-Vice Chair Katerina, seconded by Commissioner Russ. And it was specifically looking at draft map one and wanting to move Carlsbad into District Four and moving Escondido into District Five. District Three would use the Pana submitted map and acknowledging that that change might um have impacts on District Two and also other adjacent districts. Tried to move District Three to the east and extend the border of District Five. And also explore the expansion of District Two slightly east and south. So again, dark blue boundaries are the draft map on which this is based, so draft map one. And then draft map eight in the colored polygons behind. Can see some of the key changes here, being the green District Two representing the Pana submitted map. District Four expanding out into East County. District Three expanding east to take on more population as well. In terms of equal population criterion, the overall deviation is nine point four percent. One by one, we have Districts uh One, including Imperial Beach, National City, Chula Vista, and a large portion east of East County. District One expanded into Coronado in this case. So San Diego neighborhoods like Barrio Logan and Greater Golden Hill. And again, that is to um acknowledge that using the Pana submitted district um that requires that adjacent, adjacent districts be changed so that it meets that, you know, equal population criterion. So District Two does represent the Pana submitted map. Same cities, census designated places and neighborhoods as described in the past two draft maps. Extending District Three to the east was also included in the motion. We can see how that happened here, the dark blue boundary of the draft map one. And now draft map eight, District Three, including Census Designing Places of Lakeside, Crest, and Harvest and Canyon. So District Three also includes, um, you know, from Point Loma to La Jolla and University. And that's, is another change here. You can see how um Point Loma was included in this, the Southern Coastal District um in the prior draft mo- and draft map one iteration, but is now part of District Three. Major point in this motion was moving Escondido from District Four to District Five. And moving Carlsbad from District Five to District Four. So that's happened. That means that District Four now includes Carlsbad, Encinitas, Solana Beach, Del Mar, Poway, and other uh communities in San Diego, Carmel Valley, Mira Mesa, just a few, um as well as that East County Highway Seventy Eight corridor. And knowing that it was important for, you know, not only specifically in a few of the draft maps, but all of them, to keep those communities together. You have Ramona and Julian within District Four wholly. District Five then includes Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos, Escondido, Valley Center, and the North County Census Designing Places you see here. So that ends uh the portion on draft maps five through eight. I'm gonna go through in a similar fashion at a high level and look at the publicly submitted maps. First one, uh that was submitted, publicly submitted map one um shows you the existing supervisory districts in dark blue. And then the publicly submitted map districts in the color. Uh, we see, as mentioned in a previous meeting, that the overall deviation is just over zero percent. It's incredible feat um of making sure that blocks were used um and that equal population was held in very high regard. So you see, I'm not gonna go through these one by one um in terms of, of districts. But you can see that District One represents the South uh County, includes cities of uh Chula Vista, Coronado. Um, and then it extends out into East County. District Two um including large portions of East County wrapping up to the north to include North County Census Designing Places. District Three representing kind of a coastal district. District Four, um kind of an interior central district. And then District Five, including many of the Highway Seventy Eight cities such as Escondido and Oceanside. So I know I've talked at length about this a bit in some of, in terms of the draft maps. But I just want to point out again that the, the Pana submitted map included just one district. So that's what we're looking at here in pink and has the municipal boundaries and census design in places that it includes shown here. And these were, this was used in the draft maps without change. Um, so just to note that it, you know, because it's submitted as a single district, it doesn't work as a full plan of five districts. It doesn't really have a overall range per se, but you can note that the district itself is just eighty seven hundred over the ideal or one point three percent over the ideal. So that's what kind of makes it a valid, you know, starting point as a single district to build around from. And then lastly, um during the October twenty first meeting, there was a paper submitted map. And that was based on draft map one. And the major change here was um taking this uh Carlsbad and moving it from District Five into District Four. And then conversely, moving Escondido from District Four into District Five. So that was done, and it produces a, a map that has a nine point eight percent overall deviation. And then everything else was unchanged in Districts Three, Two, and One. And real briefly, I just want to talk about a couple other items in terms of mapping. Um, that being the use of race ethnicity data and how it's been, um, you know, important topic. And having the I R C be able to view this data in a useful manner. Um, so I don't want to quickly show here is C V A P, which stands for Citizen Voting Age Population Data by Race Ethnicity. And this is a available in the public district map viewer that's available on the I R C's website. And there's two ways to view this race ethnicity data. This first here is called dot density. And what we're looking at here is that one dot represents ten citizen voting age population. In this case, we're looking specifically at the Black and African American population. And then in blue, and then in that yellow or light orange, we see the same scale, one dot ten citizen voting age population. This case is the Hispanic and Latino population. And what that allows us to do is look with, you know, at where those populations are concentrated. Um, so as we zoom in, you know, we see kind of outside of San Diego into the South, Chula Vista concentrations of Hispanic Latino population, where the Black and African American community is, and how it's kind of mixed throughout. But there are those concentrations. It's a nice high level picture. Um, another way to view that is using a proportional symbol also available on the public map viewer. So it's using the same census block level information from the American Community Survey as we just saw, the C V A P information. Just a different way to visualize it. In this case, we have the information for the Asian population and kind of a light blue or green. And conversely, the Hispanic Latino population in the yellow or light orange. You can see how, you know, if a circle is larger, that's representative of a larger population of that race or ethnicity within a specific census block. So we can see similar patterns here of, you know, Hispanic Latino population in Chula Vista. Yes. I can't, yes. I'm no longer hearing you. But I'll take that as I should wrap up. And I can pass it along to you guys for questions and for public comment.
So apparently we're having issues with the public room. Is that correct?
We're back. Chris, I think we're back on. At least we could hear you. But Alex is the one.
I can, Alex, can you hear? Yes, I can hear the room now. Um, and I believe you can hear me.
And we can hear you, yes.
And as I just mentioned, I stopped sharing my screen. Those two items are included in the uh map viewer. We could also um demo them at a, at a later time during the regular meeting. But with that, that concludes my portion on reviewing draft maps five through eight and the publicly submitted maps.
Hey, very good. Well, thank you, Alex, and thanks to the Whole Flow team for your efforts. Thank you, commissioners and the public for your kind attention. At this time, I want to move to the second part of the draft map public hearing, which is an opportunity for the I R C to hear from members of the public about draft maps five through eight. I have several introductory notes, so please bear with me. We are somewhere now in the neighborhood of ninety speakers requesting to address the commission. Um, that's a good problem to have, and we're glad for it. But it does create a bit of a time challenge for us. So to be fair to all speakers, I'm going to establish a time limit of one minute per speaker, which is longer than you may think, and three minutes for groups. I'll ask staff to be ready at the end of public comment to make sure we explain all the different ways. You can submit comments to the commission after this meeting. We still have several weeks left of work, and we still want to hear from everyone and make sure they have the chance, but we need to submit their comments. But we do want to be fair to all. I'd also like to remind members of the public that the draft maps that I mentioned, that Alex has been discussing, that the commissioners have been discussing, are just that. They're draft maps. The I R C is using these maps to look at more specific issues in drawing the lines for districts to elect the County Board of Supervisors. None of these maps are final, but all reflect the criteria that the I R C must apply under law. One of those criteria, as you've heard extensively, I think during the presentation, is to have roughly equal populations in each district. That, of course, is a bit of a challenge, given the changes in our county's population over the last ten years, to draw lines that meet that and other criteria that we have to meet under law. So I'd like to just ask members of the public to look at the draft maps and discuss them and provide your input with all that in mind. It's not to limit you in your comments in any way, shape, or form. It's to try to help make sure that we can digest and do the most with your comments that we possibly can. In particular, I'd ask you to remember that what's requested for one district, as I think Alex highlighted in his presentation, is going to have an effect on other districts. The more we hear input that describes the interests about one district, but keeps in mind and maybe even explains how you might see that impact on other neighboring districts, the more I can promise you, we'll be able to discuss and utilize the comments even more. We welcome all comments. This is not to limit any comments in any way, but it is to just provide you some background of the thinking. I'd also like to note again that the clerk or I may intervene, especially given the number of comments we have, if we think that your comments may be regarding another commission's work, something outside the bounds of this commission. if we think that your comments may be regarding another commission's work, something outside the bounds of this commission that's focused on the County of San Diego Board of Supervisors elections. It is not in any way to limit or uh eliminate your comments, far from it. It's to help you get the comments to where they need to be and also be, to be fair to the other member, the public, members of the public who are joining us tonight. So with that all in mind, David, my paper says, are there any requests for the public to speak on this agenda item? But failing that, David, can you walk us through the process and help us make sure we hear as much as we possibly can?
Sure, thank you, Chair Baim. Uh, at last count, we have ten speakers who have requested to address the commission in person and seventy-five who have requested the commission uh to address their commission remotely. I'll also provide the opportunity to speak to those who did not submit a request in advance. Each individual speaker on this item will have one minute to address the commission. Group presentations will be afforded three minutes. And again, we consider a group presentation to be two or more speakers as opposed to one person representing a group. I'll begin by calling in-person speakers who have submitted a request to speak form in advance. Next, I'll call on all those participating remotely who wish to speak. Finally, I'll invite forward anyone who did not submit a request to speak form in advance but wishes to do so. So I'll begin by calling forward those present who have submitted a request in advance, beginning with Christina Piggy Mananquill and followed by John Elliott. When you hear a name called, please come forward to the microphone. You'll have one minute to address the commission. Beginning with Christina Mananquill. I understand you're speaking as part of a group. Okay, you'll be afforded three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Christina Mananquill. And uh my pronouns are she/her. I'm an organizer with Asian Solidarity Collective. We'd like to thank the commissioners for your time and energy throughout this whole process. Before we present, we'd like to introduce Asian Solidarity Collective, also known as A S C. We are a grassroots organization whose mission is to activate Asian-American social justice consciousness, condemn anti-blackness, and build Asian solidarity intersectionally with Black, Brown, Indigenous folks, people with disabilities, queer and trans people of color, and all oppressed communities. Our work includes political education, community building, and collective action. Currently, we have a large base of over five hundred members and forty-five active members throughout San Diego County. And they've been very engaged in the redistricting process um at all levels, county, city, and state. So our principles and values are a practice of cross-racial solidarity work through an intersectional practice. We believe in a bottom-up approach and by working alongside and in collaboration with those most impacted. We support Plan Six as it currently is very close to a map for all of our communities. That map is leaning toward a direction that will hold up a lot of values from other communities that Asian Solidarity Collective um supports and is in solidarity with. Uh, District One to be a majority minority Latinx and border district without Coronado and Point Loma and uphold the Voting Rights Act. District Three to create a density of Black Muslim refugee and immigrant communities as well as support of the Panamap and keeping the historic LGBTQ community in the district. District Five to unite Escondido along with the other four cities, Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, along Freeway Seventy-Eight. This region has grown very quickly and shares a number of healthcare, transportation business, and public safety and recreation resources. District Four to allow the rural areas to have a better and cohesive representation. In addition, significant Native Peoples' Community of Interest and tribal lands. District Two to reflect the coastal community of interest from Encinitas all the way down to include Coronado, Point Loma, as well as maintaining the density of AAPI community. However, we do notice that there are some changes that need to be made to ensure that AAPI will have the representation representation that is important for our community. So we're asking you to make a trade in the central part of the county between District Two and Four in Plan Six that helps better reflect important communities of interest. So if you can please take Miramesa, Rancho Penasquito, Sorrento Valley from D Four and put it into D Two to form a stronger Asian Pacific Islander community of interest that combines neighborhoods with Carmel Valley, UTC, UCSD, Convoy Business District, and Linda Vista. In exchange, the commission could take the communities in D Two that are east of I Fifteen, which are Tier Santa, Lake Murray, Navajo, and Allied Gardens, and put them in District Four. These neighborhoods are different from the coastal communities and fit better with Santee, Poway, Rancho Bernardo, Scripture Ranch, and Sabre Springs in D Four. In addition, we also provided a map that we submitted through email um by the Commission Builders Tool this morning, and we also have a physical map that we'd like to present to you as well. Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. John Elliott, followed by Sharon Haven. There's staff in the back of the chamber. And for those present, you should be able to see your time on the screen behind me.
Yeah, good evening. My name is John Elliott, uh, one oh four one four Boulder Creek Road, Descanso. You know, I've been a member of our uh Descanso Community Planning Group for thirty-plus years. I sat on the county's uh uh general plan update, I sat on the county's uh Trail Committee for many, many years. You know, and one thing over this time period is that having the political uh connection to the planning areas is still very, very important. And what's happening here with our second district is we're being sliced and diced. We are being cut off, the east San Diego County, we're being cut off from our employment centers, from our educational centers, from even the physical attributes of the land, the San Diego River Drainage System, the Sweetwater River Drainage System. All these areas have not been taken into consideration. We should have a second district that goes from, say, the Highway Seventy-Eight corridor that runs south down to the Mexican border. Uh, our employment centers of El Cajon, Santee, La Mesa, Poway, those only, that's where people, when we people live there, they commute to work, that's where they go to work. They don't go down to here to Chula Vista. And I have nothing against Chula Vista, where I was born, I lived here in Chula Vista. But uh I'm about just out of time. You know, the only map that comes close was that first publicly issued map that I saw here on the board. And uh I I urge you reconsider, keep the Mountain Empire area as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Haven, followed by Albert Haven.
My name is Sharon Haven. I've lived in Alpine for over sixty years. I've been in District Two for over sixty years. I feel very, very strongly that Alpine being cut off from El Cajon are uh and La Mesa and basically the Grossmont area, both healthcare and school district, is devastating for Alpine. We are oriented to the West. We are not oriented to the South or the East particularly. Although we have certainly closeness with Descanso and Campo and those areas, our people go to the West to go to work and they do their shopping to the West. And everything we do is oriented on the I Eight corridor. It is not oriented on the Ninety-Four corridor. We are seventeen thousand plus people and we need to keep the commonality of our communities together. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Haven, followed by Gloria Conejo. I believe you can detach that microphone.
Okay.
There's someone coming from the back to provide a microphone.
Thank you. Oh, you don't have to stand.
Good evening, Albert Haven. Uh, serve the Alpine Community Planning Group as Chair of the Mobility Committee. Lived in Alpine forty years. And uh I've never seen anything more devastating than the maps you have. Every single one of them puts us in the South Bay District. We have no connection whatsoever with that. Uh, there's no road directly to it. There's no newspaper or any kind of commonality. We are, we have, uh, we're part of the Grossmont School District, Grossmont Hospital District, the uh Padre Dam Water District. Where we go to shop, where we go to eat. And we say, we need to keep Alpine within the Heartland communities.
Thank you.
Of Lemon Grove.
Thank you for your comments. Your time has expired. Well, invite forward Gloria Conejo, followed by Arnolfo.
Can you hold on a moment? Sir, I'm willing to make an accommodation for a little more time. If you want to stay there, finish your statement with the microphone. Um, I I certainly can change the time if you have more you wanted to say. Can we have the microphone down? He'll bring you a microphone.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we need to be in the communities of Lemon Grove, La Mesa, El Cajon, Lakeside, and Santee. They're all a continuous city and they all, anytime the county does anything through District Two, they're, they're all included in one way. These maps exclude Alpine from anything done by any of those nearby cities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gloria Conejo, followed by Arnolfo Maricas.
Oh, hello, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Gloria Conejo. I'm a youth community organizer and from Northernland San Diego County, she/her hers. Um, I believe our uh North County and Latinx BIPOC community should be kept together under one supervisory district in order to maintain the California Voting Rights Act. Communities like Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, Oceanside, Fallbrook, Palma, Valley Center, and all our inland uh should be kept together. A little bit about me, in case you don't remember me, when I last spoke in September, I was born in Palm Central, Luis Anio Land, Escondido. I'm a fourth generation Mexican-American. After I was born, I was raised for about five years of my life in Palma Valley. Uh, the valley is where my great-grandparents and grandparents, each on my father's and mother's side, picked fruits from their groves uh and lived on the land of their bosses. My mother's generation grew up in both Valley Center and Palma and even in Fallbrook. I know my time's kind of running out, but I just want to get to the point that um I hope uh the commission will honor the voting, the California Voting Rights Act, and keep communities of interest together in District Five uh similar to the current draft uh Eight map. Uh, please don't separate my community of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnolfo Maricas, followed by Jesus Martin Gallegos Munoz.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Arnold Fuman Riques and I'm the CEO of uh Mac, uh Mac Project. The uh, one of our biggest interests is to look at overall at the way that the maps look and how they represent the population. It is all about who is, who are the supervisors, the decision-makers for our communities. Over about forty percent of the population here in San Diego are Latinos. That represents two supervisor seats, and so we want to make sure that those opportunities are out there for our population to be represented. And uh some, you know, when I look at the maps, I look at the at the demographics. The information in those demographics really show a couple of uh of the districts that are getting there. District One is one that is a strongly Latino um uh district, and it is really about the the representation of the population of San Diego. So we're pushing, uh, we're supporting for those districts with the demographics that allow for that. And and from looking at these, my comments are regarding uh most likely closer to Map Eight, where you are putting, keeping together the North County District Five uh communities of all of Escondido, all of San Marcos uh Oceanside and Vista within the communities out there, including Fallbrook. Thank you.
Jesus Martin Gallegos Munoz, followed by Travis Lyon.
Good afternoon. Um, thank you. As mentioned, my name is Jesus Martin Gallegos Munoz. I'm a resident of District One in Ota Mesa, San Isuro Community. I want to thank the commissioners for their hard work and dedication, and I would like to express my support for Map Six. However, I would suggest that District One include the historic Barrio Logan, Barrio Logan, Logan Heights, and Sherman Heights communities. I would argue for this, given that grouping Barrio Logan and the other communities, with more affluent communities along the coast, would further marginalize an already divided community affected by displacement and gentrification. Also, these communities represent a high level of Latinos, Hispanics, Latinx communities, Spanish speakers, and the like, as represented in National City, Chula Vista, and Pearl Beach, as previously mentioned. And with that, I urge the commission to listen to the community members and move forward with Map Six and these changes for our Latinx communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Travis Lyon, followed by Victor Tonglo.
Good evening, Commissioner. Travis Lyon, uh, I live in Alpine, Chair of the Alpine Community Planning Group. I spoke to you last week and I spoke a little bit on commonality of government. I think I've outlined those and some of our other members from Alpine have as well. What I want to point out is two things. One, we had a meeting that night, the planning group voted. Um, we voted unanimously to support some of the comments that I presented last one, which is keeping Alpine connected to its traditionally um centered government areas. Um, the commonality, we have an interest with government, with transportation, with where we shop, with where we go get our healthcare, with where we eat, with where we send our kids to school, will be separated by all the maps presented. Um, the second point is access, access to government. I I'm on a planning group. I spent a lot of time trying to convince people that government does work for them. I believe in our public health system. I believe in our institutions, and I want to continue to have my fellow residents believe that our governments are there to work for them. If they don't have access to their supervisor, they have to drive through another district to get to their supervisor's office. It it does challenge that um commitment to access. And and the last thing I would say, I think these have a disproportionate effect on unincorporated areas. Understanding unincorporated areas are not like cities. We have no other representation other than our supervisors. Thank you so much for your time.
Victor Tonglo, followed by Ross Pike. Okay, thank you. Ross Pike, followed by Maria Nunez.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Ross Pike and I'm an elected member of the Fallbrook Planning Group, but I speak to you this evening as an individual North County resident. Uh, my community of interest would be North County. That's along the Seventy-Six and Seventy-Eight corridors with communities like Fallbrook, Bonzel, Vista, Valley Center, San Marcos, Oceanside, and Escondido. Our communities share many similarities and resources from overlapping uh districts like health districts, fire districts, law enforcement, water districts, school districts, and especially transportation services. Uh, we deserve to have a single advocate for our communities that understand all of those connections between North County communities. Uh, today, I would like to ask that you keep those communities together, allowing for a unified North County represented by a single county supervisor. I'd like to express my personal support of how North County was drawn in Maps Five and Eight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Maria Nunez, followed by Letitia Maldonado Stamos.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Maria Nunez and I am a resident of the City of San Marcos. I have been a resident in San Marcos for over forty years. I also serve on the San Marcos City Council and have the honor of representing the San Marcos District One, the majority Latino district. My community of interest is that Latinx community in North County. And I'm here to urge the commission to keep this community together in North County under District Five, specifically the cities of Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, Oceanside, and the community of Fallbrook. We have um a population that includes a substantial number of Latinos, and we urge the commission to keep this in mind as it draws its map. Thank you.
Thank you. Letitia Maldonado Stamos, followed by Lillian Serrano.
Do you have me as a group speaker?
I have an indication that you wish to speak to as a group. Do you have others in your group?
Yes.
Are they here tonight, ma'am?
Pardon me?
Are they here with you tonight?
They're on the Zoom. They're they're on Zoom tonight.
Okay, well, I'll get to them individually, but I don't have a way of combining you together, so I'm I'm afraid I'm going to give you one minute. And they'll each get a minute as well.
Okay. All right. My name is Letitia Maldonado Stamos. You've heard from me before. I was going to speak on behalf of Voces, which is a community organizing group that's based on collective leadership. Um, I think since I don't have the time to speak here uh on what I was going to um share with you, the main thing that I want to let you know is that we support Map Five. I was at the last meeting and I submitted a piece of paper map. Um, and I, at that time, there was no map that you all were considering that included Escondido and Fallbrook. So I submitted my paper map. I see now that Map Five is a more fitting map. So um I would like to withdraw my own map if that's something that you all do and uh express our support for Map Five. Um, the advice by supporting map, I'm sorry, Map Eight, as it pertains to District Five, I think we have an opportunity to honor the purpose of the California Voting Rights Act that is to protect the rights of racially marginalized voters to have a chance to elect a preferred candidate. The advice put forth at the last meeting by Mr. Adelson, I believe was his name, was to remember that district, districting is a law-driven process to address race-related voting rights issues.
Thank you.
Um, and I want to apologize, please, that um I didn't have a ride here, so I didn't even have a chance to pull my hair. I'm not here with a cap in disrespect. I just barely had a chance to change my clothes. I'm here with a cap on, respecting you and your uh your purpose and your mission. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Ms. Maldonado, I promise you, we will not let that affect your input in any way, shape, or form. I think my presence here demonstrates our commitment to avoid judgment on appearances.
Lillian Serrano.
Chair.
Followed by Marcela Nunez. Followed by Arcella Nunez.
Could I just ask, did she support map eight or map five, the previous speaker? I was, I heard. Could, could I just clarify, please?
We'll, we'll clarify, but I believe she's saying it, it was actually support for map eight as it pertains to District Five.
Thank you.
So thank you, Commissioner Eminem, for speaking up. I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to call. All right. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
No problem. Good evening. My name is Lillian Serrano, and I'm an Escondido resident. I was here last public hearing, and I, I am actually very thankful for all of you that actually listened to our public input from, sorry, North County residents and changed the draft maps to include a, a couple of them that are close to what we were describing. More specifically, I would like to talk about my support of my District Five and Map Eight. I can only speak to you about what I know, and what I know, it's my North County community. I want to thank you for keeping Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, Oceanside, Fallbrook, Bonzo, De Luz, Rainbow, Palapama, and Valley Center all together under one district. As all of the other speakers have mentioned, this process is really to protect historically disenfranchised groups illegally protected under the Voting Rights Act. This map protects my community of interest, the Latino community. It's important that we are protected as a group and not as an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Arcella Nunez.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. My name is Arcela Nunez, and I am an educator in the field of Chicano and Chicano Studies. I am also co-director of Universidad Popular. My remarks are specifically focused on the North County region of map eight, which would be part of District Five. I'm here to urge the commission to please keep the historic barrios that date back about a hundred fifty years of a great deal of a symbiotic relationship across the areas of Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, Oceanside, and the greater Fallbrook area. Latinos live and travel very easily across the whole North County region, but are specifically connected and have deep roots in each of these areas. Please don't dilute the voting block of the Latino community.
Thank you. I'll now move to those participating remotely. I'll ask all those who wish to address the commission to please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Begin with Yasmeen Abid. You'll have one minute to address the commission. You may need to unmute yourself. Yasmeen, are you there? You may need to unmute yourself.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Great, thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Yasmeen. Oh, I hear an echo.
We can hear you clearly.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you hear?
I'll ask our, the technical staff to address that, but we can hear you in the chamber clearly.
Okay, sorry. Can you reset my time, please?
Yeah, go ahead and restart your time.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Yasmeen Abid, a Muslim Arab living in Spring Valley in the redistricting fellow for Majdal, the Arab Community Center of San Diego and Alcoa, where I work in addition to City Heights. Over the past five months, we hosted four bilingual COI sessions, spoke directly to many community members, and hosted workshops in English and Arabic. And we thank you all for making it possible for our community to do a group presentation back in September. Our communities are connected through shared experiences as immigrants, refugees, or children of immigrants and refugees. Arabic as a common language, shared cultural values and places of worship, as well as socioeconomic status as renters. Of the county's draft maps, I like that City Heights, Alcoa, Paradise Hills, Spring Valley, and Ranch of San Diego are kept together in draft maps six, seven, and eight. District three in draft map six and seven, and District two in draft map eight are important to lifting up BIPOC refugee and immigrant communities that we support. However, I dislike that Santee was included in the BIPOC refugee and immigrant districts in earlier maps. Thank you so much, and have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Thank you. Julie Gordon Shackelford, you have one minute to address the commission, and again, you may need to unmute yourself.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted.
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Gordon Shackelford, former elected member and longtime Chair of the Lakeside Community Planning Group. You know, within the cities, people probably, many cases, don't really know what supervisor they have, but on the unincorporated community, you always do. And I can tell you, on leading an elected planning group, as we deal with Alpine and other planning groups, things are worked out through that office. And it comes to the point that for us, local government is the Board of Supervisors, and that supervisor effectively is our mayor. So that really what I believe you need, and I'm not sure your analytic firm really started this way, is you really wanted a minimal change doctrine. And in part, because there's going to be some very strong feelings about changing to different supervisors over different issues, which have been very hot recently, it's not good to step into that. But most importantly, in East County, as the planning groups, as a unit for a very long period of time, working with our District Two supervisor, that has been our mechanism to make our area work. Thank you.
Gordon. Is my speaker working?
Microphones, we, Mr. Shackelford, we lost you just as you were ending your comments, or at least your time was expiring. See if we can restore that. We still show you.
Are you there, Mr. Shackelford?
I'm, I'm, I'm here. I'm
All right.
I want you folks to know I'm troubled by the one minute, so it's really hard to structure things, but I'll try. So what did you miss?
Well, you have about fifteen more seconds, so if you want to sort of
Actually, I think all the settings on the computer covered my time, so. The, the, I'll come back to a point. In other words, the county government is our government, period. They are our local government. It's not like a city where the board is somebody that deals with some particular whatever. And the ability to work coherently in an area such as East County, as we have for years, with often our supervisor's office being the one that works out problems and issues between adjacent planning areas. That's something we're building that simply function on. And the mapping that was done by your consultant takes all that extremely lightly. The presentation took it extremely lightly. So really, you, you really need a minimal change doctrine as opposed to something from the consultant would seem to be destructive about as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Corrales, you have one minute to address the commission. I'm showing you as muted, Ms. Corrales. Julie Corrales, you may need to unmute yourself. Click the unmute button at the bottom of Zoom if you're participating in Zoom. Okay, I'm going to come back to you. John Minto. John Minto, you have one minute to address the commission.
Thank you very much. I, I addressed you at the last meeting. I'm the mayor of the city of Santee. I talked briefly about keeping our communities together and our councils together, water districts, school districts, tribal councils, fire districts, planning districts. And one of the things that I want to add to that is that we definitely need to make sure that our communities, Alpine Crest, Lakeside, are all together. Some of the speakers have already talked about Crest and Lakeside and the, also the Grossmont Union High School District, Padre Dam. These are all things that bring us together. And what we're doing now is basically creating a north, south, and central county, and no east county. I appreciate all of the work that you are doing, though, because being the mayor of the city, I am going through this same process with our redistricting. And I know that not everybody's going to be happy, and not everybody's going to be unhappy. So do the best you can, and thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. Julie Corrales, you have one minute to address the commission. Still need to unmute yourself. I'm going to come back to you again. Kathleen Lipit, you have one minute to address the commission. You need to unmute yourself. Kathleen Lipit. Okay, we can hear you now. You have one minute.
Yeah. Okay. Good evening. After looking at those maps, it seems like a better lens could have been a more vertical approach where you could still pick up the population that you needed. But vertically, the communities share much more in common than they do from west to, west to east. So it's just an observation that seems to, it, it is a shame to see much of the unincorporated communities being rolled into beach communities and beach cities that with whom they have met little, but nothing in common. They just don't share common concerns. And they're already disenfranchised. I'd hate to see them further disenfranchised. Thank you.
Kathleen, you mentioned the map, but I don't know if you mentioned what map number you were referring to. And I'll ask you and others who are referring to a map to make sure they identify that map clearly.
No, actually, what I was saying is that the, the way the, all of these maps are done, they are done horizontally along the X axis. And I'm suggesting that it, it really would have kept communities of concern together had it been done on the Y axis and more, more focus on east, on north to south. That's all.
Thank you very much. Alina June, you have one minute to address the commission.
Hi, my name is Alina Jun Nawabi. I'm calling from Caris, San Diego. I appreciate your time. Thank you for bringing us all together. I do also appreciate that Plan Six currently is the direction of uniting Escondido with other four cities such as Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, along with freeway seventy-eight. This region has grown very quickly and shares a number of healthcare, transportation, business, public safety, and recreational resources. I urge the commission to listen to the community members and move forward with Plan Six tonight with North County community. Thank you very much. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. Alex Ferron. You have one minute to address the commission.
Hi, yes, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Alex Ferron with the Surf Rider Foundation. We are calling and supporting map six specifically. We really appreciate that there's a coastal district, and in that, we would prefer to see AAPI communities included communities that aren't currently. We also, very, very importantly, pressing on the matter that we need to have our border region be reflective of the Latinx communities, including Barrio Logan and excluding Alpine. District Five, understanding the shared resources in North County and uniting Escondido with seventieth corridor. Generally, those are our asks.
Thank you. Malcolm Morgan, you have one minute to address the commission. Malcolm, you may need to unmute yourself. Malcolm Morgan, you may need to unmute yourself. We can't hear you. Malcolm, I'm going to come back to you. Luis. You have one minute to address the commission.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Luis Montez Adams. My pronouns are he, him, his, and on behalf of the San Diego LGBT Community Center, we are calling in to support map six. I think uniting the LGBTQ community within map six is a strong issue, something that we stand behind and something we look forward to receiving your support on. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for your brevity. Dr. DJ Kooten Candy.
Hi, my name is Candy. I am calling in full support of Asian Solidarity Collective and their plan on map six as it's currently very close to a map for all of our Asian communities and our communities that maps leaning toward a direction that will hold up a lot of our values from our communities and Asian solidarities members they support and stand in solidarity with. I'm also calling in support, full support of partnership advancement of new Americans of the county draft maps. I really like that City Heights, La Mesa, Lemon Grove, Alcoa, Paradise Hills, Spring Valley, and Ranch of San Diego are kept together. BIPOC refugee and immigrant communities of interest must be kept together to ensure that shared needs such as increased affordable housing, equitable transportation access, and English languages are adequately addressed by the County Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much for hearing us today and keeping our communities in mind while withdrawing the lines. We appreciate and ask you keep our communities together in this process.
Thank you. Malcolm Morgan, coming back to you. You have one minute to address the commission.
Yes, thank you for that. I'm just, I'm just calling in support of, of Panna and some of the maps that they submitted. I want to say that I'm in favor of City Heights, La Mesa, Lemon Grove, and Alcoa, Paradise Hills, Spring Valley, and Ranch of San Diego being kept together in draft maps six and seven. Also, District Three in map six and seven are important in lifting up our BIPOC communities, people of color. What I, what I don't like is the fact that Santee is included in the, in the area where there's large concentrations of people of colors, refugees, in some of the earlier draft maps. That's, that's all I want to say for now. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. Rob Howard, you have one minute to address the commission.
Yes, thank you so much. Rob Howard, I'm Oceanside resident. I want to start by saying I'm in support of map six, and here's why. One, as an African American, as a veteran, it's not just about the fact that I live in North County, but map six is closer to what I care about, is keeping those communities in the South all together with the African American, Muslim, refugee, immigrant, WGTQ communities together, and the API community numbers in a good spot. North County, the reason map six, while it's not perfect, I'm not going to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I like the fact that we have the seventy-eight corridor where we can work on transportation. We have a bunch of tourism, and we need to build out public transportation to get people to and from work, because these are jobs where they cannot afford to live in the area that they'll be working. So again, support for map six, the veteran community there also. Those cities along the seventy-eight quarters, it's important that we keep them all together. Again, thank you all for your work. I know it's tough. But again, we'll get this done.
Thank you. Iris Trammell, you have one minute to address the commission.
Good evening. My name is Iris Trammell, and I reside in the Encanto area of San Diego County. And I am a proud member of SEIU Local 221. I want to thank the commissioners for their hard work and for listening to the communities during these past few months. I support map six as it is currently very close to the map for all of our communities. That map is leaning toward a direction that holds up the values of all of our communities. As a county worker and as a member of the African American community, I know the importance of having a county government that truly represents the community by including the proposed map for this district from Panna. Previously, you were helping keep, keep several communities of interest together. I urge the commission to listen to the community members and move forward with Plan Six tonight. And hi, Barbara Jimenez.
Thank you. Esther Sanchez, you have one minute to address the commission.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Esther Sanchez, mayor for the city of Oceanside, as well as multi-generational member of the community here in North County District Five. I urge you to actually consider map eight that really defines District Five to keep Fallbrook in, in the, in the area. Twenty years ago, Escondido was taken out. That was kind of gerrymandering. So I really appreciate your fixing that situation, but let's not compound that, make it more difficult for the Latino community to have a voice, to be able to vote for the candidate of their choice. I also understand that from the MAC project that they are also supporting map eight because it it best represents the Latino community for District One, and it also includes the Pana map. So I urge you to consider Map Eight for District Five. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Stacy, you have one minute to address the commission. Stacy, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Stacy Uy, and I'm a member of Asian Solidarity Collective who presented earlier. I support Draft Map Six because it currently holds up the shared values with all of our communities that we are committed to remain in solidarity with. Values like District One to be a majority minority Latinx and border district without Coronado and Point Loma. District Three to create a density for the Black Muslim refugees and immigrant communities, as well as keeping the historic LGBTQ community in the district. District Four to allow the rural areas to have a better and cohesive representation, and also a significant Native Peoples' community of interest in tribal lands. District Five to unite Escandito along with the other four cities, Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, along the Freeway 78, while respecting the strong veterans' presence and the Latinx community of interest. District Two to reflect the coastal community of interest from Encinitas all the way down to include Coronado and Point Loma. I just urge you all to listen to the community members and move forward with Plan Six with the changes that Asian Solidarity Collective and other communities have advocated for. Thank you.
Thank you. Rami Ibrahim, you have one minute to address the commission.
Hi, commissioners. My name is Rami Ibrahim, and I'm the redistricting fellow for Panna, San Diego. I've been monitoring your meetings for a couple months, and I'm super impressed with the depth of your outreach and all your work regarding redrawing the lines of the county's draft maps. I really like that City Heights, El Cajon, La Mesa, Lemon Grove, Paradise Hills, Spring Valley, and Rancho San Diego are kept together in draft Maps Six and Seven. I'm not going to ask you to move forward with a specific map. However, District Three and Map Six and Seven are really important in uplifting the BIPOC refugee and immigrant communities that we support. I did dislike that Santee was included in the BIPOC refugee and immigrant district in the earlier maps, and want to uplift that Alpine should not be included in this district due to lack of shared demographics and community characteristics. Refugees have invested in critical interest and direct representation in county government so that they have a voice in shaping our policies that lead to welcoming resettlement. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dori Rattray, you have one minute to address the commission.
Thank you. My name is Dori Rattray, and I'm a member of the Valley Center Community Planning Group. Tonight, I'm speaking as an individual, and my comments don't represent the planning group as a whole, but I'd like to thank the commission for the opportunity to share my opinion. I've reviewed the maps, and in my opinion, Map Seven provides the most desirable District Four map or for District Five. North County is a community of interest. We share a lot of common interests in North County institutions such as government agencies, healthcare entities, youth sports, social institutions. We would prefer to have one unified North County district and one district manager or district representative supervisor. We're unique. We make up, are made up of tribal reservations. We have a lot of unincorporated communities like Fallbrook, Valley Center, and Bonzal. And separating our unincorporated areas from North County, in my opinion, would deteriorate our community interest. We're unique. Local government is important, and we are distinct and different from other city areas around. So appreciate your time and welcome you to come to Valley Center to have an in-person meeting if you'd like.
Thank you. Myleene Aboue, you have one minute to address the commission.
Thank you so much, and good evening, everyone. My name is Myleena Buon, a resident of Chute La Vista, and my pronouns are she/her/hers. And I'm a proud SEIU 221 member, and I support Draft Map Six, as it is currently very close to the map for all our communities. As a county worker and member of the API community, I know the importance of having a county government that truly represents the community. However, I do notice that there are some changes that need to be made to ensure that the API community will have that representation that is important for our community. And I won't repeat all the points that have been shared by members of Asian Solidarity Collective and other community organizations, but we are asking that you make a trade in the central part of the community between District Two and Four in Plan Six that helps better reflect the importance of our API communities of interest. I urge the commission to listen to the community members and move forward with Plan Six tonight with these changes incorporated. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Debbie Wrestler, you have one minute to address the commission.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, first of all, for all of the work that you have done in pulling together a lot of input from a lot of diverse communities. I would like to ask the commission to please support Plan Six, as I feel that it does the best job of connecting many communities of interest and keeping them together so that their representation will reflect their needs. In particular, I feel like it's especially important that Escandito be united with the other cities along the 78th Corridor. I think there are so many things, including residential traffic, work, and a lot of issues that really join this region. And I think their interests of both the people that live and work in all of those communities would be best served by a representative who is covering all of those communities together. So I strongly support Plan Six and appreciate your taking the time for my input. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Alberggo, you have one minute to address the commission.
Thank you, commissioners, for taking the time to listen to the input of the residents of all the communities that have been impacted by your hard work. I live in Escandito, and I support Map Six. I believe it is the best map for all of the communities in San Diego. In District Five, the map will combine my city, Escandito, with the cities along the 78th Corridor. These cities all share policy interests of public safety, healthcare, education, and public transportation. The map keeps intact our Latinx community and our large veterans' population. I urge the commission to listen to the community input and move forward with Map Six, which I believe is the most comprehensive map that addresses the needs of the entire county. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Taylor, you have one minute to address the commission.
Good morning, commissioners. Jim Taylor here. I'm a third-generation San Dagan, forty-two years in the real estate business, and a resident of Hamul. And we're a community here. And Hamul is much like Alpine and Lakeside. We're sister communities in more than one way, but we have very little fire risk out here is high. We have little water accessibility, and we commute mainly to the west and the north. Our skyline truck trail is our superhighway out here. We've been represented very well by our supervisor in District Two. We'd like to keep it that way. It's really the only representation that we have. Very other, very little other representation than that. Of the maps that I've seen, the only one that comes close is the public map one, but I would like to keep District Two as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Juan Vargas, you have a minute to address the commission.
Hello, commission. Thank you so much. First off, thank you for actually listening to the needs of the folks in North County. I do feel like we have some maps that we could actually digest and view connecting all the communities of interest in North County, but I'd like to show my support for map number eight. I'm a resident of Escandito, and I think map eight does keep a lot of the rural areas in North County together, along with the rest of the 78th Corridor. And it really ensures that the California Voting Act is really highlighted here and gives that voting power to us, to folks that are within that region. So I would like to share my support for map number eight, District Five, and map number eight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Adele, you have one minute to address the commission.
My name's Adele Josefo. I am a long-term resident of North County, born and raised, and have lived here many years. I would like to thank the commissioners for their work here and for listening to people over all these months. And I'd also like to go on record as supporting Map Six. It is currently written with the necessary changes to the district brought forward by the Asian Solidarity Collective and their API community members. Two of the reasons, additional, the reasons I favor this plan are, one, I believe it keeps communities of interest more cohesive than some of the other plans. I also believe that the representation of coastal needs with the new proposed district is crucial. And lastly, I believe that creating District Five, uniting Escandito with Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, and Oceanside favors that corridor and all their common interests. Thank you.
Thank you.
David, let me just interrupt briefly, partly to give commissioners just a few moments separation. We still have more than thirty speakers to go, but it is, we're going through it, so it's all appreciated, of course. And I did want to let commissioners know, at the end of public input, I'll be asking if you want to take a break, or if you want to go on through clarifying questions on this agenda. With that, David, sorry to interrupt, please go ahead.
Thank you. Josephine Telemontes? Josephine, you may need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I did. Okay. My name is Josephine Telemontes, and I'm a resident of Barrio Logan. My family has been here for over one hundred and fifteen years, and due to racist restrictive residential covenants, we remained here all these years. I am the secretary of the Barrio Logan Planning Group, vice chair of the Barrio Logan Association Maintenance Assessment District, member of the AB 617 Air Pollution Portside Steering Committee, Chicago, I'm a member of the Chicano Park Steering Committee, and the chair of the Chicano Park Museum and Cultural Center. Barrio Logan, I looked at all the maps, and all the maps seem to split up Barrio Logan. We are in District One, and we don't need to be split up. The community has been affected by many, many racial issues that have historically isolated us, and so I'm leaning towards map number six, but I do not want Barrio Logan split up from the other historic districts on whichever map we choose. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Aguari, you may need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. My name is Diana Aguirre, and I'm a resident of Carlsbad. I'm calling in support of Map Six. The reason being is because Map Six takes into consideration providing representation for the Latino community, African American, LGBTQ, API, immigrant communities across all of San Diego County. So as we know, any changes to any part of the maps or the districts affects all the districts. So it seems that Map Six provides the best representation. As a Carlsbad resident, we have most commonalities with Oceanside, Vista, Escandito, and San Marcos, and we're aligned with the 78th Corridor, the Tri-City Healthcare, and the Palomar Airport. I've been attending the redistricting meetings and working with other communities of interest, and Map Six seems to meet most of our North County needs. It's a good combination of urban, rural, and coastal areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marissa Allen?
Hello, my name is Marissa Allen, and I'm a lifelong resident of North County. I have lived and worked in Escanito for the last two years, but throughout my life, I've also lived, worked, and attended schools in Valley Center and San Marcos. As of this time, map eight is the closest to IO districting for North County, as in one of North County communities like Escanito, San Marcos, and Vista, and the surrounding rural areas like Valley Center, Palma Valley, Fallbrook, and then numerous nearby tribal areas are kept together. These areas share a strong sense of community, economic centers, hospitals, colleges, and more. In addition, they have a large Latinx and indigenous population throughout the area whose power will be greatly diluted by breaking up the communities. It is important that North County is represented by one supervisor who will be able to advocate for public health in these often hard-to-reach communities, disaster preparedness, climate and housing justice, transportation, and for other shared interests and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Janine Erica?
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Hi, good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you all for listening to us and giving us the opportunity to speak today. As you all know, my name is Janine Erica, and I'm a policy associate at Panna. First and foremost, I want to thank you for accepting our community map and incorporating it into the draft maps. Really means a lot to the communities that we represent. Of the community draft maps, of course, we really like that City Heights, La Mesa, Lemon Grove, El Cajon, Paradise Hills, Spring Valley, and Rancho San Diego are kept together in draft Maps Six and Seven in District Three, and are important in uplifting the BIPOC refugee and immigrant communities that we support. I want to say that in certain earlier draft maps, we did not like that Santee and Alpine were included in our districts. Santee and Alpine have different priorities and areas of interest than our BIPOC refugee immigrant communities who make the majority of those areas. Again, this is more a critical time more than ever in the world to uplift and to protect refugees as a communities of interest. Thank you for your dedication and drawing fair maps. We'll see you at the next hearing.
Thank you. Laura Hunter, you have one minute to address the commission.
Thank you very much for the chance to speak tonight. My name is Laura Hunter. I'm a thirty-year resident of Escandito, and I've spoken at three of these meetings. So thank you for this effort. This is a really heavy lift. I'm speaking in strong favor of Map Six with a couple edits I hope you will make to it.
Laura, we just...
Yeah?
Laura, I'm afraid we just lost you. I don't want you to go on.
Oh, okay. Can you, can you hear me?
No, we can hear you again. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Oops. Well, I'm speaking in favor, a strong support of Map Six with a couple edits, which I hope you'll make. I think it most closely prioritizes, addresses the priorities that I think are really important. I think while I've been mostly focused on my District Five issues, it's really time to look more holistically to forge a compromise, and I think MAC Six does this the best. Our region along the 78th Corridor is growing a lot, and I submitted maps to show where the growth is happening. Oops, I'm running out of time. One change I would ask you to make is make sure that Barrio Logan is not, is included in District One, that Barrio Logan is included in District One and not in the coastal district where it is right now in Map Six. So that would be one edit that I would ask you to make. I strongly support the Pana map, and I hope you'll move forward with amended Plan Six tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Ohealy, you have one minute to address the commission. Tim, you may need to unmute yourself.
My name is Tim Ohealy. I live in Carlsbad, and I'm a marine veteran. We in Carlsbad, Escandito, San Marcos, Oceanside, and Vista have one of the greatest concentrations of veteran populations in the country, along with a substantial active-duty force at Camp Pendleton. The veterans and active-duty for many decades have been a community of interest. The VA recognized the need and strategically placed its healthcare clinics and other offices in Escandito and Oceanside to provide services to veterans in the 78th Corridor. We, just as many other community of interest groups represented today, are deserving of a unified voice. However, the veteran and active-duty community is unique to all others. We served, and we made many sacrifices to our fellow citizens and country. We earned a unified voice. I urge you to use Map Six, including Carlsbad, Oceanside, Escandito, San Marcos, and Vista in the same district.
Thank you. Telephone number ending eight one zero two. You have one minute to address the commission. You may need to press star six in order to unmute yourself. Telephone number ending eight one zero two.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Cree Chan, and I'm a member of Asian Solidarity Collective. I want to show support for Map Six tonight, as it is the most representative of all of our community's values. I'll echo some of these values now, including maintaining the Voting Rights Act and Latinx community in District One, creating a higher density for the Black Muslim refugee, immigrant, and LGBTQ community in District Three, cohesive representation for rural areas and the Native Peoples' community of interest in tribal lands in District Four, and unity of the 78th Corridor cities, Escandito, Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, and San Marcos in District Five. However, I'm also advocating for the changes that Asian Solidarity Collective has proposed to Map Six tonight, as a As a resident of Mira Mesa for the past three years and alumni of UCSD, I think this really reflects the community that not only shares a common cultural fabric, but also has real potential to grow as a cultural epicenter if these changes suggested by Asian Solidarity Collective are implemented. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Misty O'Healy, you have one minute to address the commission.
My name is Misty O'Healy. I'm a resident of Carlsbad and spouse of a Marine Corps veteran. I want to speak for my support for map six, keeping Carlsbad, Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos, and Escondido along the seventy-eight corridor intact. One, a few things that keep, that keep the district, those communities together are the lifeline of transportation, recreation, education, and healthcare. But there's one little thing that I have not heard mentioned, and that is the Carlsbad Desalination Plant, which services the communities of Vista and San Marcos to keep that water and those communities tied together, I think is an incredibly important factor. Thank you.
Thank you. Telephone number ending eight one eight four nine. You have one minute to address the commission. You may need to press star six to unmute yourself. Telephone number ending one eight four nine. You're still muted.
Can you hear me?
Now I can hear you, yes.
Perfect. Hi, good evening. My name is Ismael de Flores. I'm a resident of District One, and I want to thank the commissioners for their hard work and for listening to us this night. I support draft map number six as it currently is, and it's very close to a map for all communities and follows the direction of the Voting Rights Act. However, I would suggest that you make a change so that District One includes the historic Barrio Logan neighborhoods of Chairman Heights, Logan Heights, and Barrio Logan. I urge the commission to listen to the community members tonight and move forward with plan six tonight with these changes for our Latino community. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Roback?
Hi there, Steve Roback. I'm on the Lakeside Community Planning Group. Looking at these maps, and as others have said previously, the closest might come to what seems acceptable to us out in East County would be the publicly submitted map, map number one. A lot of these districts, areas have stayed similar, especially like District Five. It's grown and shrank in areas. But our District Two, which we've had good representation for a long time, was pretty much wiped out and pushed to the West City. And the ones that we do get in on the maps, our community of interest, we're a different type of resident out here in the East County than would be saying La Jolla or Pacific Beach. And it looks like most of these maps were done basically solely on numbers, and it really wasn't taking a lot of the community, the interest of the individual communities, though around the central city they were. East County suffering is getting broken up into two, and our District Two no longer would even exist under any of these maps. It would be near the, near the ocean. Thanks.
Thank you. Kathy Steele?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Kathy Steele, and I live in San Marcos. Thank you for your hard work and for listening to the input of the many communities of interest in San Diego County over the last several months. I, I support map six as it is currently as close as possible to a map that will satisfy the needs and values of all communities in our county. I endorse the changes as suggested by the Asian Solidarity Collective and the inclusion of Barrio Logan in D1. That will ensure fair and equal rep, representation to these communities. As a resident of District Five, I thank you for uniting the seventy-eight corridor cities of Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, and Escondido in Plan Six. It's a fast-growing region that shares multiple concerns. So I urge the commission to listen to the COIs who have presented their hopes for united communities and move ahead with Plan Six tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mike Sinella, you have one minute to address the commission.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Great, thank you. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to make some brief comments. My name is Mike Sinella, and I live in San Marcos with my family, and I've been a North County resident for over forty years. Speaking to you tonight as a private citizen, and my comments are my own, but I wanted to share that I am also currently the Board President of Vallesidos Water District. Vallesidos provides water and wastewater services to San Marcos, unincorporated Lake San Marcos, and parts of Escondido, Vista, and Carlsbad. I want to encourage you to leave the current District Five boundaries intact as much as you can during this redistricting process. North County is a community of interest that shares a common sense of community and should remain with one supervisor district, within one supervisor district, sorry. One of our, from our overlapping school districts, healthcare districts, water districts, our shared public safety services, and our unique business clusters, North County is connected in more ways than I have time to state here. The Highway seventy-eight corridor from Oceanside to San Marcos, combined with our more rural communities like Fallbrook, Valley Center, and our unincorporated and tribal neighbors, make North County a fabulous place to raise a family, work, and play.
Thank you, Mike. I'm afraid you're out of time.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your participation.
Kate Schwartz-Friedes?
Yes, thank you so much. This evening, I speak as an individual resident in the Fallbrook, Northern, North County region. Previously, I spoke to this body and mentioned that I am also a board trustee on the Fallbrook Regional Health District. In that prior speech, I mentioned all of the various partnerships with our Northern North County communities, and how the service needs of our residents throughout North County are met through these partnerships. I also will echo comments made by prior speakers that our only government representation is through our Board of Supervisor, and we need a supervisor that is representing all of the Northern, North County interests. I therefore support draft map number eight, as it maintains our North County communities' interests, including Escondido and Fallbrook, and it supports our long-established government and service partnerships, as I mentioned. Map number eight also follows the guidelines of the CBRA in as much as our Latinx population in Fallbrook is forty percent and in Escondido is fifty percent. And this map would provide adequate and appropriate representation for that community of interest as well. Thank you so much, commissioners.
Maya Grace Misra?
Hi, my name is Maya Misra, and I'm a member of Asian Solidarity Collective. I want to first thank the commission for all of your care and hard work in digesting community input and redrawing these lines. As a resident of Ocean Beach, I'm calling in support of draft map six, because it moves us so much closer to upholding the values of our many communities throughout the county. And I also want to emphasize the importance of these priorities. For District One to be a majority-minority Latinx and border district without Coronado and Point Loma, for District Two to reflect the coastal community of interest from Etc. All the way down to include Coronado and Point Loma, for District Three to create density for the Black Muslim refugee and immigrant communities, for District Four to have a more cohesive representation among rural areas, and to protect a significant Native Peoples' Community of Interest in tribal lands, and for District Five to unite Escondido along with Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos. I appreciate that map Plan Six is moving in the direction of creating a district with the coastal community of interest. As an Ocean Beach resident, I can personally attest that my surrounding neighborhoods place high emphasis on coastal environmental concerns, and it doesn't make-
Thank you. I'm afraid you're out of time.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Denise Jones?
Hello, and good evening. Thank you, Elle, for the work that you guys are doing on this redistricting. I do live in the unincorporated town of Lakeside, and I do want to point out that it would be very difficult for someone who lives in Chula Vista, Imperial Beach, or Mira Mesa to understand what it's like to live in a town where our main street ends at our rodeo grounds. So just imagine that our rodeo grounds is our main street. Explain how that works to someone who lives in Imperial Beach. We have very, very different concerns. We have hundreds of homes that get burned by forest fires. Explain that to someone who lives downtown. That's not something that we can share with the rest of the county. We need to have a cohesive East County group, much like is presented in the publicly submitted map. And I do want to support, you know, East County, the south, south areas of Barrio Logan and Logan Heights. I believe they should be in District One. I believe the northern counties, that others have said, San Marcos, Vista, Fallbrook, those communities need to stay together as well. And I do also agree with the Panama map. Thank you for your time.
Telephone number ending five three six two. Press star six to unmute your phone.
Hi, good evening. My name is Judith Howell, and I'm calling to express my support for draft map six. I want to thank the commissioners for their hard work and for listening to the communities during these past few months. The historical LGBTQ community of interest in Hillcrest, University Heights, North Park, Mission Hills, Normal Heights, and Canton Center kept together. Both the traditional Black communities of City Council District Four, La Mesa and Lemon Grove are combined with the emerging Black communities of Alcoa, Spring Valley, and City Heights, where refugees reside, make up a strong BIPOC community of interest in this district. I urge the commission to listen to the communities, excuse me, I urge the commission to listen to the community members and move forward with plan six tonight with the Black Muslim refugees and immigrant LGBTQ communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Telephone number ending five nine six three. Press star six to unmute your phone. Telephone number ending five nine six three. We can't hear you. You may need to press start. There you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Hi, okay, wonderful. Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you so much. My name is Nina Dumise. I'm a thirty-one-year resident of Lakeside. I represent Kewanas Club of Lakeside, and I'm a member of the Lakeside Chamber. Lakeside, Ramona, and Alpine are sister communities with common interests shared through our being in unincorporated areas with equestrian and agricultural properties. We want to make sure that you keep that in mind. Our students feed into Growth Mont Union High School District, and our community organizations work together to support our youth. Our public safety needs to be, are shared, our public safety needs are shared by local law enforcement, fire protection, health, and water, and that's a real concern. We want to make sure those stay together. And our shared resources, because we're unincorporated, come from the county for our areas. So we want to make sure that you keep in mind that unincorporated areas stay together, Lakeside, Ramona, and Alpine. And in addition to that, our Economic Center is Santee, Lakeside, Alcoa, and Alpine. We do many, many things with our workforce development and our industrial centers. So commissioners, thank you so much for your work.
Thank you. Telephone number ending eight nine four seven. Press star six to unmute your phone. Telephone number ending eight nine four seven. We can't hear you. Press star six to unmute your phone.
Thank you. I'm Bob Studdy, the current Board President of the Ramona Unified School District, completing my nineteenth year on that board. I'm also a member of Cuda Committee for the Ramona Planning Group, and I'm a member of the Ramona Village Design Committee under the Board of Supervisors. I grew up in Lakeside, living in Ramona. I ask that you please do not dilute the voice of Ramona, Lakeside, and Alpine by breaking us into different districts. I don't see a map that maintains the grouping of Ramona, Lakeside, and Alpine, and I support an outcome that will yield a minimal destruction of the current District Two. Though we value coastal communities, we don't share the same challenges. If we're disenfranchised from each other, our ability to be heard when we dilute it truly creating a scenario of taxation without representation. These incorporated communities of interest share a population type that commutes in different fashion than the other communities. Therefore, we view roads differently. We have limited mass transportation, which adds to that. Similarly, we have the same type of fire exposure, and we share equestrian and agriculture commonality. There's a world of difference and dynamic of the need of healthcare and mental healthcare, and even the homeless needs are different. Thank you.
Mae Case, you have one minute to address the commission.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mae Case. My pronouns are she/her/hers, and I'm a resident of Chula Vista and a member of Asian Solidarity Collective. I'm here to support, share my support of map six as well. It's very close to a map that benefits all of the communities throughout the county. I also want to echo support for what was mentioned earlier, which is to make a trade in the central part of the county between District Two and Four and Plan Six. That better helps empower our API communities of interest. That would include taking Mira Mesa, Rancho Peniskitas, and Cerrento Valley from D4 and putting it into D2 to form a stronger API community. And in exchange, we propose that the commission take the communities in D2 that are east of I-15, which are Tierra Santa, Lake Mary, Navajo, and Allied Gardens, and put them into District Four. We urge the commission to listen to the community members and to move forward with Plan Six tonight with these changes incorporated. Thank you so much for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Georgine Tomasi? Georgine?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. Thank you so much, and thanks for caring enough to listen to a myriad of community voices. I support six as it is currently is. It's very close to a map that is for all of our communities, District One, Three, Four, Two, and Five. I do endorse some of the changes that were included for Barrio Logan, moving up to District One. And I appreciate that Plan Six currently is in the direction of uniting Escondido with the other four cities in our area, Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, along the seventy-eight. Having been a longtime resident of Escondido, so I urge this commission, I'm going to keep it short, to listen to the community members and move forward tonight with Plan Six for the North County communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rama Awad?
Hi.
Go ahead, Rama.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Rama Awad. I'm the Programs Manager at the Majdah Center at the Arab Community Center of San Diego. We're in Alcoa, and so in East County. I personally live in San Diego between City Heights and La Mesa, and I identify my Arab community as a critical subset of a broader community of interest, which includes BIPOC immigrants and refugees. I'm here to express my support for draft maps that keep City Heights, La Mesa, Lemon Grove, Alcoa, and Paradise Hills, Spring Valley, and Rancho San Diego as, together in a, in a single district. District Three and draft map six and seven are important in uplifting our Black, Arab, Middle Eastern, Muslim, Asian refugee and immigrant communities. And regarding Santee and some of the earlier draft maps, I, I'm not for its inclusion in the BIPOC refugee and immigrant district. I want to uplift that Alpine should not be included in this district as well, due to a lack of shared demographics and community characteristics. And again, I just want to, okay, thank you so much.
Jennifer Jeffries?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm here to speak in favor of map eight. I live in Fallbrook, California, and I'm part of the unincorporated areas at the very northern end of this county. I support map eight because of the longtime alliances we have culturally with our healthcare and our recreational allies with Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos, and Escondido. I also support map eight because it recognizes the dynamics of the I-76 and the seventy-eight as it moves from the northern border through Fallbrook into the Oceanside and the I-78 corridor. It's a very vital part of our lives. With the inclusion of Escondido- With the inclusion of Escondido, this map expands the economic relationships that will be very welcomed. And I believe this will support the principles of the California Voting Act on behalf of Latino voters. So we hope that this map will gain your attention and see it valued. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kevin Stevenson.
Hello, yeah, I just wanted to reiterate my support for keeping North County together, primarily Escondido, Oceanside, San Marcos, Vista, Fallbrook, Valley Center, Paula, Rainbow, Bonzel, et cetera, et cetera. I'm personally rooting for map eight, just based on the, the current draft maps that we have available. I basically already said the same thing at the last meeting, but I didn't specify any specific map, so I would like to show my support for map eight and I think that would be the best way to go forward with this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Fattick.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to all this input. I would like to show support for map six and not being redundant for all of the same reasons most of the other callers have indicated. I also would like to thank the commission for running an efficient meeting this evening and all the participants for being respectful of each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Johnson. Larry Johnson, you may need to unmute yourself.
Yes, I just did. I'm Larry Johnson from Campo. And I've heard many statements that I'd like to repeat tonight, but, but I guess the main thing I would like to stress is that the East County is, is made up of a lot of small communities that depend upon the, the planning groups. It depends upon the school districts. It depends upon the transportation routes and those transportation routes typically lead us towards Alpine and Lakeside and Alcoa Home and Santee. Those are the communities that, that we relate to very closely for a long period of time. That was in the old District Two that Diane Jacobs ran. We don't relate to and have very much to do with the Chula Vista area and so forth. Have nothing against them, but it's two totally different styles of living and, and styles of things that you're concerned about. Here we're concerned about is electricity going off? Are we going to have a fire? Our government is primarily through the supervisor that represents us and okay, thank you.
Neil, you have one minute to address the commission.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Neil Ortega. My pronouns are he, him, and I'm here on behalf of Planned Parenthood Action Fund of the Pacific Southwest. First off, thank you for your time, effort and for listening to the community input for these past few months. We generally support draft map six because of, as you've heard from many community groups, it's very close to a map for all of our communities. Of particular interest to us are the healthcare and public health needs of like communities. And draft map six fixes a glaring gap in North County over the last couple of decades by uniting Escondido with Vista, Carlsbad, Oceanside and some of the other seventy-eight corridor communities. We also appreciate that Plan Six is currently in the direction of following the VRA by having South County areas as a majority minority district. That said, we strongly urge you to make a change so that District One includes the historic barrio neighborhoods of Sherman Heights, Logan Heights and Barrio Logan, which can be accomplished by removing the population from Pine Valley, Pine Valley, Alpine or other areas east of Alcoa Home along the, the eight that might better fit in a East County district. Thank you.
Thank you. Telephone number ending eight, four, nine, five. May need to press star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Hello, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, tonight. My name is Rahmo Abbi, a community organizer with Pana. And I want to thank you all for your hard work and making it possible for our community to participate in all this stage of the process. I have lived in City Heights for over twenty-five years, continue working in City Heights. I hosted a community mapping session in Colina Park with Somali and Omar community. So they could fully participate on, in the mapping our communities. As you, as, as you have heard today from our community members, we are so excited to participate, keeping City Heights together with other refugee and immigrants is really important to us. I appreciate you incorporating the map our community draw into the most recent draft mapping. In the county, in the county drafted map, I really like the City Heights, La Mesa, Lemon Grove, Alcoa Home, Paradise Hills, Spring Valley, Ranch of San Diego are kept together in draft maps six and seven. And District Three and Draft Maps Six and Seven as well is important to uplift our BIPOC refugee and immigrant communities. However, I dislike the Santee was included in the refugee and immigrant district in the earlier draft map. We did not share anything in common with the resident in Santee and have different priority and concern. Thank you.
Telephone number ending eight thousand, eight zero, zero, zero. Press star six to unmute yourself. Telephone number ending eight, zero, zero, zero. We can't hear you. Press star six to unmute yourself. I'm going to come back to you. Telephone number ending nine, four, one, six. Press star six to unmute yourself. Telephone number ending nine, four, one, six. All right, I'm going to come back to you. Omer Khan, you have one minute to address the commission.
Hi there. Thank you for giving us the time to speak. My name's Omer Khan. I work with CARE San Diego. I appreciate that Plan Six currently is in the direction of uniting Escondido with other four cities, Oceanside.
Omer, we lost, Omer, we lost you.
Can you hear me now?
At this point, we just heard your introduction.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you. Can you start the one minute again? I'll ask our staff to do that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I just want to thank you that, for giving us the time to speak. I appreciate that Plan Six currently is in the direction of uniting Escondido with other four cities. Those are Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, along the freeway seventy-eight. This region's grown very quickly and shares a number of healthcare, transportation, business, public safety and recreational, recreation resources. District Five is in Plan Six, as you all know, also respects the strong veteran presence that plays a significant role in our community affairs as well as keeping intact the Latino community of interest that provides a common culture and shared policy interests around language, public safety, healthcare and education. I urge the community, the commission today to listen to the community members and move forward with Plan Six tonight with the North County communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Julie Corrales, you have one minute to address the commission.
Hi, thank you commissioners for your time and for letting us be here tonight to speak to you. My name is Julie Corrales. I am a policy advocate with the Environmental Health Coalition. I'm also a community organizer in Barrio Logan. I live, I work and I play here. I'm calling in support of map six as for all the many reasons that folks have been expressing tonight, but I specifically want to tell you how important it is that map six be altered to include Barrio Logan in District One. Barrio Logan has been the subject of environmental racism and racist values policies for decades. We have a median income of thirty-eight thousand dollars per year. We have, we're on ninety-five percentile of cancer risk in the entire nation and the top five percent of most polluted communities in California. We have nothing in common with Salona Beach, with La Jolla, with Del Mar. Our community would be completely disenfranchised in such a power dynamic. It would be a continued injustice to group us with District One. Barrio Logan is a home to national historic landmark, Chicano Park, one of only fourteen designated California cultural district. And it needs to be protected. It would be drowned out by powerful affluent industry voices in downtown. You guys have to group us with the communities we belong with. Anything else would be an injustice. Thank you.
Telephone number ending eight thousand, eight, zero, zero, zero. Telephone number ending eight thousand, eight, zero, zero, zero. I'm going to come back to you. I'll show you one more time. Telephone number ending eight thousand. Press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello.
I should, go ahead.
Hello, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Fatima and I was born and raised and continue to live in City Heights. I participated in the community mapping sessions hosted by Pana. City Heights is really important to me and my community. Our community is made up of immigrants, refugees and children of immigrants and refugees. Our community has shared languages, religion, cultural practices, community centers, socioeconomic status and common goals for our children and families. Other counties draft maps are related like the City Heights, Lemon Grove, Alcoa Home, Paradise Hills, Spring Valley and Ranch of San Diego are kept together in draft maps six, six and seven, District Three and Draft Maps Six and Seven. And District Two and Draft Maps Six and Seven are important in uplifting our BIPOC refugee and immigrant communities. However, I dislike that Santee was included in the refugee and immigrant district in the earlier draft map. We don't share anything in common with residents in Santee and have different priorities and concerns. As a newcomer community, the majority of us speak a primary language, primary languages other than English at home and are limited English proficient. The BIPOC refugee.
Thank you. Yes, your time is expired.
Right.
Susie Hanson, you have one minute to address the commission. Susie, you may need to unmute yourself. Susie Hanson.
Okay, there we go. I got it. Am I unmuted?
No, yes, you are. We can hear you.
Okay, excellent. Yes, I am a forty-plus year member, a resident of Escondido and I'm highly in support of map six. It brings all the sister cities together along the seventy-eight corridor and with our united interests and the cares that are needed for their communities. And thank you very much for your work and your patience with all of us working here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mustafa Nizam. Mustafa.
Hi there. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Mustafa Nizam. I live in Vista, California. I am an outreach manager for the Council on American Islamic Relations. After months of community education regarding redistricting in the Muslim community, we also asked community members to plot where they live in North County. We found that they are spread all over the area, including Carlsbad and especially Escondido. Including these cities in D five keeps the diversity of the immigrant and Latino communities within the district. I urge the commission to move forward with map six. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty LaMelly. Patty LaMelly, you have one minute to address the commission. You do need to unmute yourself. Patty LaMelly, you need to unmute yourself. There's an unmute button at the bottom of Zoom. Patty, I'm going to come back to you. Hussein, you have one minute to address the commission.
And can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Hussein Nor and I have lived in City Heights over twenty years. I participated in the community mapping session hosted by Pana and have been serving as interpreter to make sure that our community can stay involved in all parts of process. Our community is made up of immigrants, refugees. Our community has shared languages, religion, cultural practices, community centers, socioeconomic status and common goals for our children and families. Of the country's draft map, counties draft map, I really like that City Heights, La Mesa, Lemon Grove, Alcoa Home, Paradise Hills, Spring Valley and Ranch of San Diego are kept together in draft maps six and seven. Draft Three in maps six and seven and District Two.
Thank you.
And however, I don't like that Santee was included in the refugee. And really, I appreciate for your listening, our voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Carmichael, you have one minute to address the commission. Tracy, go ahead and unmute yourself. Tracy Carmichael.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Thank you. My name is Tracy Carmichael. I'm a resident of Carlsbad. I'm a taxpayer, business owner and a homeowner. For thirty-three, thirty-four years, we've lived in Carlsbad. We've started a business. We've raised our family. We love Carlsbad and we love and call North County home. That we embrace our suburban and rural communities in which we connect in many ways. Carlsbad is unique as we have a community of interest and commonality of government in the areas of community health, water, desalination, school districts, agriculture and many jobs around the hospitality and tourism industry. It is essential for us to have a continuity and representation as taxpayers and businesses owners that align with our neighbors and cities along the seventy-eight corridor in which we have worked so diligently over the years to connect and make each community stronger. I encourage you to support map number seven. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Beth Nelson, you have one minute to address the commission.
Thank you. I'm a San Diego Planning Group member and I'm speaking independently tonight as our planning group has not had a presentation or discussion on these maps yet. I'm a twenty-year resident in Ranch of Santa Fe. And Ranch of Santa Fe and Elfin Forest are in the unincorporated area of the county. So we have no other representation besides our supervisor. With respect to map six, where we're in the coastal district two, I believe most of all of their communities in map six are incorporated cities. We are in a high fire danger area. This is not a concern for most of the coastal cities. We're a rural equestrian area. It's not uncommon to see a rider on horseback along our roads and trails. We have lots of agriculture such as citrus groves and vineyards. Nothing in common with downtown. We share many services and schools with the limited coastal areas of Del Mar, Salona Beach and to some extent, Encinitas and Carlsbad, but not Pacific Beach, Point Loma or Coronado. In short, map five, six in particular and seven do not make any sense for our community. The best alignment for our community is map eight. I urge you to consider map eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike McDonald.
Hi, yes, my name is Michael and I'm a resident of District Four and a member of Asian Solidarity Collective. I support implementing draft map six and changes that ASC is advocating for, including District One to be a majority minority Latinx and border district without Coronado and Point Loma until uphold the Voting Rights Act. District Five to unite Escondido along the four other cities along the seventy-eight freeway. This region has grown very quickly and shares a number of healthcare, transportation, business, public safety and recreation resources while respecting strong veteran presence and Latino community of interest. District Four to allow the rural areas to have a better and cohesive representation and also a significant native people's community of interest in tribal lands. District Two to reflect the coastal community of interest as well as maintaining the density of the API community. By including the proposed map for this district from Pana previously, we are helping to keep several communities of interest intact, including historic LGBTQ community of Hillcrest, University Heights, North Park, Mission Hills, Normal Heights and Kensington. And both traditional black communities in City Council District Four, La Mesa, Lemon Grove, combined with the emerging black communities in Alcoa Home, Spring Valley and City Heights where refugees reside, make up a strong BIPOC community of interest in this district. I urge the I urge the commission to listen to the community members and move forward with map six. Thank you.
J I R E H Providers. You may need to unmute yourself. J I R E H Providers.
Oh, yes, sorry. It's Jireh Providers. I didn't recognize it. Hello, my name is Samantha Williams. Thank you for taking the time to hear all of the public comments this evening. For the sake of not being redundant, I'll keep it short and sweet. I am a family nurse practitioner and a community organizer, and I'm calling in in support of map six with a request that includes Bario Logan. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all of those participating remotely who had raised a virtual hand. I'll ask those present if you didn't speak to the commission earlier and would like to. You're welcome to come forward to the microphone at this time. Not seeing any movement in the chamber. We do have additional speakers or participating remotely. Anyone participating remotely who has not spoken earlier and would like to go ahead and raise a virtual hand at this time. Start with Karen Brennan. You have one minute to address the commission.
Hi, my name is Karen Brennan. I'm a twenty-year resident of Carlsbad. I'm an Army veteran. I've spoken to you before. As you know, there are a lot of veterans who live in North County. Many of us live and work along the I seventy-eighth corridor. Of course, also in Camp Pendleton. I am calling in to support map six because I think that reflects the requests from veterans like me who have asked to keep our community connected as much as possible. I just want to change it up a little bit with a personal story. It's been a long time since I was deployed behind the iron curtain for a few years during the Cold War. Since then, I've lived in different parts of our country, and during that time, I found that some, a lot of times, years would pass before I'd meet even one other woman veteran. Needless to say, that was pretty isolating. However, once I moved to North County San Diego, all that began to change. I'm now part of a relatively small but growing community within the military community, which is women veterans. I've met the ones that I've met by joining small groups and volunteering in events across that same I seventy-eighth corridor that's included in map six. These connections are very important, and I would just hope that you don't forget that. So please, my support for map six.
Dennis Randall.
Yes, good evening. My name is Dennis Randall, and I am a longtime resident of North County, currently residing in Carlsbad. I intend to keep this very brief. Thank you to the IRC and to all who have given your time and efforts to help determine the future of my home. I am seventy-two, a U.S. Coast Guard veteran, and have spent most of my adult life working, raising kids, playing, eating, shopping, and congregating in and around the cities of Oceanside, Vista, Carlsbad, San Marcos, and Escondido. The I seventy-eighth section of roadway more than any other is truly mine. From this veteran's perspective, these five cities are where I have found a community of like-minded veterans of all services. Your map plan six seems to respect this, and I thank you.
Thank you. Yusef Miller.
Yes, this is Yusef Miller with the North County Equity and Justice Coalition in support of Plan Six. I am a African-American of Muslim background, and I have Afro-Latino children who who work and play during the seventy-eighth corridor and the seventy-sixth corridor. So I appreciate the map that includes Escondido, Oceanside Vista, San Marcos, to include Fallbrook, as our Latinx brothers and sisters of North County has said. And with that being said, across both those corridors, we have social justice issues that we have in common with the work that the North County NAACP does. Environmental actions happen. Our Latinx community, historical Latinx community in North County. So please, thank you for, please include Bario Logan into one county Asian solidarity collective suggestions and the work of PANA. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Wyland. Mark, you may need to unmute yourself.
I think it's unmuted now.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, thank you first of all for volunteering for what is a tough job. I'm calling in trying to look at the entire county and effective governance based on a decade and a half in the state legislature, state senate, state assembly, mostly representing North County. And I can tell you from working with elected officials at every level, including the supervisors, over many years, community of interest is the critical issue in terms of effective governance. And that involves dozens of things, and you've heard of some, from school districts, water boards, commerce, transportation. And I think this is unintentionally and innocently problematic, all the maps, because they don't look at a basis from the previous maps going back decades. And the most obvious casualty is East County. You can go back so many decades. My grandfather in the nineteen thirties as a supervisor represented North County.
Thank you, sir.
I think frankly, the only way to correct this is to use the existing map and previous maps as a guide, because this young man, I'm certain, is very good at the numbers, but simply doesn't understand the county and those communities of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Abdi Salam Jama. Abdi Salam Jama, you may need to unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Oh, thank you. My name is Abdi Salam Jama. Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I live in City Heights. I've been living in City Heights for over ten years. I participated in the community mapping session hosted by PANA. Our community are immigrants and refugees. Our community has shared languages, cultural practices, community centers, and all kind of, all kind of lifestyles. I really like the City Heights mapping. I support the mapping of La Mesa, City Heights, Lemon Grove, El Cajon, Paradise Hills, Spring Valley, and Rancho San Diego should be kept together in draft map six, seven, and eight. Districts three in the map and the draft map of seven and six. District two in draft map eight are important in uplifting our Black and Arab, Middle Eastern, and Muslim refugees. Thank you.
Caller has identified himself as Frank. You have one minute to address the commission.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes. Hi, my name's Frank Hilker, and I reside in Lakeside, California. I've looked at all these maps, and they really don't keep the community interest together with our sister cities such as as Ramona and Alpine. In fact, some of the maps actually split up the Lakeside Community Planning Area, which, which to me, I really can't understand. I would, I would hope that the commissioners would look at this, and they would keep community interest together and keep our sister cities together, as well as our areas of economic commerce of El Cajon and Santee. Thank you.
Thank you. Telephone number ending four two three three. Press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is, good evening. This is Kathy Castle. I'm the president, CEO of the Lakeside Chamber of Commerce, and I have some very serious concerns regarding the maps proposed. Breaking up the unincorporated areas of East County is not, does not meet the needs of my community. I know many of my community members have spoken before me and after me, I'm sure, talking about our communities of interest with our neighboring communities. But did you know that Lakeside, Santee, Ramona, Alpine, El Cajon Fire Department and paramedic services assist each other with calls every single day? And after the devastating Cedar Fire, a comprehensive safety plan was created with all the unincorporated fire districts and sheriffs collaborating to work together to be better prepared for the next fire. So I have concerns about what will become of this. And I'm struggling to find common in community of interest with some of the other communities that Lakeside has been bundled with. I don't understand how these communities would understand our needs, the struggles of an egg rancher, a dairy farmer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope Nelson, you have one minute to address the commission.
Good evening. I'm Hope Nelson, president of Citizens for Friendly Airport and a twenty-one-year resident of Carlsbad. You can't make everybody happy, but you can make sure all communities get consideration and benefit. I believe map, map six does that. I won't repeat all the reasons that the others have, have done that, but I will say that District Five in map six respects a strong veteran presence. It keeps intact a Latino community. It unites Escondido with the four cities of Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, and San Marcos. It recognizes the shared policy interest, language, public safety, health, healthcare, education, and infrastructure, and McClellan Palomar Airport. I urge you to move forward with plan six. Thank you.
Thank you. Tazin Nizam.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for being here and allowing us to express our concerns. And I appreciate the plan six because that includes the cities of Oceanside, Carlsbad, Vista, San Marcos, and along the freeway seventy-eight areas. The district five in plan six also respects the strong veteran presence that plays a significant role in our community. And also, a very important thing to me and close to my heart, which I have expressed to you before, is the inclusion of Carlsbad in District Five so that communities of Vista have a seat at the table when we talk about the airport expansion. Once again, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Carrie Forrest.
Hello, I'm Carrie Forrest. I'm the chair of the Descanso Community Planning Group. And in several of the early maps, Descanso was isolated from the rest of her sister communities. The Mountain Empire School District binds all of us from Descanso to Hakamba, Mountain Laguna. And so these areas need to be kept together. I see in the later maps that is accomplished, like map six, seven, and eight, at least the Mountain Empire backcountry is kept together, and that's the way it should be. Descanso should not be separated. Also, the commonality and access of county government is being challenged by merging the backcountry with highly urbanized areas. Our voice will be diluted by this action. To merge our voices with densely populated areas of the South Bay region, please don't dilute our real voices of the backcountry. We only have our supervisor. We don't have mayors. We don't have any other government. And our supervisor needs to be in our community and understand where we're coming from, just like Lakeside and Ramona and Santee. I love Santee. People are saying no Santee, but we love it. So let's make them part of us.
Thank you. Janet Mulder.
Thank you very much. I thought you'd forgotten me. My name is Janet Mulder, and I've been an elected member of the Hummel Del Zera Community Planning Group since its inception in the nineteen seventies. And my husband and I and our family have lived in Hummel for almost fifty years, and I'm terribly concerned that you would think that our rural community should be segregated or separated from other like-rural communities as they now exist in District Two and would have more in common with than certainly the city of Chula Vista, as that's where you put them when you combine us into District One and allow it to go from the coast all the way to Imperial County, which is absurd. Excuse me, the problem is, the rural areas such as Hummel and Del Zera have much in common with the other rural areas such as Alpine, Ramona, Lakeside, Julian, and those up further north, as they have much more in common, both in their mutual concerns and solutions to problems. One of the most difficult problems is that of the dangers of fire and the difficulties evacuating on two-lane roads in the event of wildfires. These are totally different problems than those of the urban areas. In fact, are quite different and challenging for a supervisor to handle even today. Thank you very much.
Brian Lafferty.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm, my name is Brian Lafferty. I'm a proud member of SCIU Local Two Twenty-One. And I'm speaking here as a, not just a county worker, but an ally for the LGBTQ community. I live in North Park, lived here for three years. I, and before that, I lived in Hillcrest for four and a half years. I ask that the LGBT community of interest in Hillcrest, University Heights, North Park, Mission Hills, Normal Heights, and Kensington, please keep them together. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Rebel.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm a new resident of San Diego County, and I've spent time working throughout the seventy-eighth corridor, and I encourage you to support draft map six. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Andrew.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. I want to thank you so much. My name is Andrew Hayes. I'm a school board member in Lakeside. And I just want to talk about a couple of things. One is, Ramona, Lakeside, Alpine, and Hummel all have similar communities of interest. We have large parcel sizes for our land equestrian interests. We even have corridors of transportation for business. And on the eight, we, I see on map six that Interstate Eight does run out, obviously out over there. Well, Alpine, we do commerce with in Lakeside, Highway sixty-seven up to Ramona, very important for our businesses in East County and fire routes as well. So I really would encourage the commission to think on those items. Also, the last thing is to highlight a point on centers of population. When you look at Chula Vista National City, it'll be, it'll be difficult for a supervisor to understand the interests of areas such as Campo and Hummel and Alpine. So centering them in a district where they've been together is a very, very good idea for East County. We're essentially getting ripped apart here into three different directions, and so I'd really like you to consider that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Telephone number ending eight zero three two. Press star six to, go ahead.
And continue to live in City Heights, organized primarily there. I participated in the community mapping. Hello.
You're, yeah, you're fading in and out. Could you repeat your name one more time? We'll give you that minute. You're having a little bit of a technical problem hearing you.
Sure, sorry. Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Shakria, and I was born and raised and continue to live in City Heights and have organized primarily there. I participated in the community mapping session hosted by PANA. City Heights is really important to me and my community. Our community is made up of immigrants, refugees, and children of immigrants and our refugees who share common goals for our children and families. I want to thank you for incorporating PANA in the county draft maps. I really like that City Heights, La Mesa, Lemon Grove, El Cajon, Paradise Hills, Spring Valley, and Rancho San Diego are kept together in draft map six and seven. However, I dislike that Santee was included in the refugee and immigrant district in the earlier draft maps. We don't share anything in common with residents in Santee. Can you hear me? Hello? Hello?
Yes, go ahead. You have about fifteen more seconds.
Okay. However, I dislike that Santee was included in the refugee and immigrant district in the earlier draft maps. We don't share anything in common with residents in Santee and have different priorities and concerns. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Justin Domasila.
Hi, thank you for recognizing me. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. I apologize. Thank you. I would like to push for map eight. I am a queer, biracial, white, and Asian presenting person in North County. I live in Vista and in the unincorporated. I have heard a lot of arguments for different maps in the north, some from people that I'm, you know, might not know North County like I know North County. So I would like to hold Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, and Oceanside together because we have more in common than an airport, which is not a representation of people. It's not a real representation in the same way that a Latino voting bloc is, which is what I've grown up and know. That's the North County I know. My friends in Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, and unincorporated areas have much more in terms of socioeconomic mobility and comment amongst each other than we do with Carlsbad. I don't know anyone in my age group or in my demographics that could afford to live in Carlsbad, but I know many of us that can afford to live in the poorer areas of Escondido, San Marcos, Oceanside, and Vista. That is where we go, and we have nowhere else to go. Please don't separate us. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you. Telephone number ending zero two nine four. Press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, my name is Ayesha. Thank you for your
Hello, my name is Ayesha. Thank you for your time this evening. I just wanted to share that I participated in the community mapping session hosted by Panna. And District Three and Draft Map Six and Seven are extremely important in uplifting our BIPOC refugee and immigrant community. One thing I disliked, however, was that Santee was included in the Refugee and Immigrant District in the earlier draft map. We don't share anything in common with residents in Santee and have different priorities and concerns. I think it's essential that BIPOC refugee and immigrant communities of interest are kept together to ensure that our shared needs are addressed by the County Board of Supervisors. Again, I appreciate your time and ask that you keep our communities together in this process. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Not seeing any further virtual hands and having checked in the chamber for additional speakers. That concludes public testimony on this item. Chair Baim?
Thank you very much, David. It would take another meeting to express thanks for all the comments we just had. What another great demonstration of the diversity, the commitment that people have to our county. And I just can't thank you enough. My suggestion, Commissioners, is that we take a break. Now, I want to do that with a couple of things in mind. With your permission, I'd like to suggest we dispense with clarifying questions under this agenda item because we're going to have a moment for clarifying questions to Flow Analytics, our demographer, during the next agenda item. I'd also ask you to be ready with Commissioner's statements shortly after we get back, although we will turn to Flow first. If there's anything you need to communicate about during the break, please feel free to talk to staff, and they can track us down here as needed. So with that, I had been planning for a 10-minute break. Is that still acceptable to Commissioners? Good? All right. So by my clock, it's 7:54. Please be back at 8:54, sorry, 04. And just a reminder, we do have to close out in this room by 10:00 PM. So we have that long to get the rest of our work done. We're in recess until 8:04. Thank you.
Commissioners Russ Brown and Garcia get extra okay and Katerina, y'all get gold stars for being back on time. Chris Chan, you get a silver star.
I've been here, my video was none. There we go.
Very good. All right. All right. Well, thank you, Commissioners. And we've got a forum, so we'll go ahead and get started now reconvening at eight oh six P M. Um, all right. So just to lay out the timeline again, the time I'm most concerned about is ten P M. Because that's when we've got a physical hard stop time here in the city chambers in Chula Vista. I think that's more than sufficient time. What I again, I'm hoping to do right now is to move back into Agenda Item Six. With as efficient as possible, an update on communities of interest. We're, I know we've got some requests to speak, but since this item is almost entirely about mapping. I'm in touch with council about exactly what kind of public input will be needed for this or what kind of limits we may impose, mainly because I think we've, we had a very successful public hearing. And I want to make sure we can move on to discussion as efficiently as possible about mapping, but more on that. So for right now, we'll turn to Agenda Item Six, starting with an update from our demographer, Flow Analytics on communities of interest. And a discussion impossible approval, and it's fair to say a likely approval of direction to Flow Analytics regarding I R C draft maps. I did want to note, just because I heard some public comment about it. That Flow Analytics is our demographer. So if there are any questions, doubts, or concerns about what Flow is working on, drawing, analyzing. It is on us as Commissioners to make sure our instructions address those points. I think Commissioners know that well. I think it's come up before, but I did want to reinforce. All right. Just to note on context, four additional maps were developed by Flow based on the I R C's direction at our October twenty first meeting. And were provided to Commissioners as well as posted on the I R C website on October twenty fifth. As required by law in connection with the public hearing we just had. Today's agenda item provides Commissioners with opportunities to deliver opening statements, which we'll have in just a moment after Flow Analytics. It gives just a little more presentation. Then we'll discuss those draft maps and provide more instruction to Flow to refine those maps. As we continue working towards a final map to be adopted before December fifteenth, twenty twenty one. I'll note for the record that our next meeting on November thirteenth will be a live scenario modeling session. Where Commissioners can work with Flow to make changes in real time and see the results on screen. And I want to reassure reassure the public as well. That'll be another moment to see exactly how we're working through this and what options are out there. So for this item, let me start with opening comments first from our single point of contact for demographic services, Commissioner Ken Inman. And then we'll follow that with an update from Flow's John McKenzie on communities of interest. At that point, I'll ask Commissioners for clarifying questions, obviously hoping they'll be as concise as possible. Then we'll turn to Commissioner's statements, then we'll turn to motions on maps. For now though, Commissioner Inman, the floor is yours.
Sure Ben. Well, I was gonna start with a brief history of my upbringing, starting in Corvallis where I was born. But I suppose I won't bore you with that and I'll try to get to the point. I did want to reinforce some of the things that we heard tonight. Accommodating certain requests clearly excludes accommodation of others. We heard that several times. And that's very true in North County when we talk about Corvallis and Escudero. I believe the public and Commissioners understand that Flow clearly outlined that in the maps that they showed us. Accommodating certain requests have also resulted in rural East County side effects or downstream effects. And that's the nature of redistricting. So I just want everybody to understand, the public in particular, that this is a process. And that's why we need to hear from you in terms of how that process is moving. We don't know how to course correct. If we don't have anybody giving us that feedback. And so to echo what Chair Bame said earlier, we definitely appreciate the feedback, heard it. And tonight now, we move on to the next phase of using that feedback to try to update the current set of draft maps that we have. Along those lines, I wanted to talk about a few things in terms of the tools that we have available to do this. So there are three tools now. And I don't want people to get confused about what does what, but we have the district scenario modeler, the D S M. Which is a full fledged mapping platform. We can be used to edit geographies and create new districts. There's also a web based app that Flow has created that you can use to quickly view existing draft maps, the existing districts and do the dot density maps to look at ethnicity. You can overlay any combination of existing draft maps with the existing supervisory districts. So that's a place where you can very quickly compare and contrast the current set of draft maps that we're looking at. You can't make any changes to them, but you can clearly go in there and bring up tables and compare and contrast. So that's the purpose of the web based tool that Flow has presented. And then we have what they're going to show us next. John is going to show us next, which is the COI tool. And the COI tool is all about helping us understand public comment that we've received, the e comments. The information that we've gotten from the community builder tool. Show us what the themes are, display them in a way that we can understand where they're coming from. And the impact that they may have on the districts that we need to consider and draw. And so again, we have three tools at our disposal with the public and the Commission to accomplish the task of moving forward in the mapping process. District scenario modeler, place where you can edit, you can see detailed tables. The web based app, which is a great place to go and compare and contrast the existing results as well as get that density maps for theme. And is that density maps for race and ethnicity, as well as the COI tool that we talked about next. And so that I'll turn it over to Flow and John to talk about, give us an update on community input that we've received so far in the new tool. So thank you very much, John.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. So I'm going to give you just a quick high level summary of the community input we've received. Just numerically, and then I will do a brief demo of the community of interest. And public comment and tracker tracker tools so that you can see how that works. And how it will provide you some insights into all of this information we are receiving from the public. So just in summary, as of just prior to this meeting, we had received eight hundred and roughly eight hundred and forty total comments after tonight. I think we're probably up around nine hundred and forty by my count. Thirty five of those have been polygons or drawn drawn of a particular community of interest using the community builder tool. Five hundred and thirty three of those were e comments, twenty two were emails, eighty three were in person. That's gonna jump up and fifteen letters. A hundred and thirty three remote testimonies. Another one's gonna go right up after tonight, which is great to see. And then still we have one other that I don't quite know what that other is, but we've got one other. So it's a whole lot of information and you know, one of our jobs is to try to provide that information in out to the Commission and the public in a way that can be digested, right? There's so much information that can be a challenge. So with that said, I am going to I'm going to run through this kind of quickly because I know this is a packed schedule tonight. But I do want to show our public comment and testimony tracker tool. So this tool is it takes into account all of the comments. So it's not just the community builder or the e comments. It is, it's everything. That said, we don't have everything in there just yet. We built the tool last week and deployed it. We are actively going through and adding comments to that. As we go through the full list of all public testimony and comments. What we are doing is reading every single one and we are tagging those with themes and geographies. To do our best to provide a tool that allows you to associate themes with the geographies so that the Commission and the public can best understand where in the county certain themes are arising. And the result of that effort is this tool here. So if you take a look at it, you'll see that we have a word cloud with a bunch of themes that our team has at Flow has come together. We've done some standardization to try to group these to once again, try to make something that people can digest with all this information and associated with a map that you see here. And you see there are some dots that just indicates that there's more comments, right? Associated with that geography, bigger the dot, more comments associated with that geography. The larger the text in the word cloud, the more comments associated with that theme. Now below both of those, we have a table, which is just the list of the actual comments. So the comments are right there and you can read them. And as I just accidentally showed, if something doesn't fit in there and you hover over it, you will be able to see the full comment. So the way this works is that you're gonna want to start primarily with the word cloud really, though you don't have to. And you can click on a theme. So I'll click on shared resources. And that is going to begin the filtering process. It's going to filter both the map and the table. And it's going to filter the, so right now it is filter the table below to only those comments that have been tagged with the theme shared resources. And it's only showing in the map those communities that have been associated with that theme. So when I click shared resources, you can see there's still quite a bit of information here. So if I wanted to look in a bit more detail, I could then click on the the dot here for Fallbrook. And it's once again going to then filter for all of those comments that we have received that have been tagged with the theme for shared resources in the community of Fallbrook. If I want to remove those filters, I would just click on that circle again to remove that. And and change my theme there. If you just want to look at a particular community. You could go and click on here Ramona, and then you're going to get a word cloud associated with Ramona. And you can then see all of the comments related to it. So that's the tool. It's pretty basic. It's pretty simple, but there is, there's a lot of effort to it. What I do want to say is this is a qualitative exercise. It's, we're probably not going to get it perfect. And what's most important, I think, is to look at these themes and to use this as a tool to read through there. But we are, and we are going to be doing our best to get these comments in as fast as we can. We're doing good. And then after tonight, it's a good thing we got so much input. But now we've got a lot more we gotta get in here and we're gonna be working at it. So that will be going. There will be a little bit of a delay getting these in simply because we do have to read through them and make sure we're tagging them as best as we can. But we will continue, we will be continuing to update this every day as much as we can. And I do hope that over the next week or so, we will get fully caught up. And at that point, we'll be able to keep it up to date at a more regular basis. But it is quite a bit of work right now getting through this first chunk. And so we're continuing to work on that and we're going to go through it as best we can. And once again, we really hope this tool will help make it a bit easier for the Commission and the public to understand all of these comments that we're getting and what types of information the Commission is receiving. And how we're using that information as we draw maps going forward. So thank you.
Thank you, John. We now turn to public comment. And I've got let me just put it this way. I do want to be respectful of Commissioners' time, but we also need to be respectful members of the public who want to offer comments. I do want to remind Members of the Public without in any way steering their comments one way or the other. That is perfectly appropriate to say, I agree with the previous speaker. I like map. Pick your number. I appreciate the discussion about this. I completely agree with what Mr. McKenzie just said. I completely disagree with what Chair Bame just said, but keeping it to one sentence would be fine. We will maintain the one minute formal limit, but I would very much encourage the public to be as concise as possible in their remarks. With that, David, do we have any requests from the public to speak on this agenda?
Thank you, Chair Bame. We have two speakers who've requested to address the Commission in person and seven who have requested to address the Commission remotely. Begin with those in person who have submitted advanced requests, Jean Hui Tran, followed by Baron Willis. If you're present and you wish to address the Commission, you're welcome to come forward. Don't see any movement in the chamber. If anybody is present who wishes to address the Commission and didn't submit an advanced request, you're welcome to come forward. Don't see any requests to come forward in the chamber. So we did receive seven requests virtually. Anybody participating virtually, whether you have submitted an advanced or not, and would like to address the Commission? Please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Start with Larry Johnson. You have one minute to address the Commission.
Hi, I'm Larry Johnson from Campo, and I spoke earlier on item five. I would just like to reiterate, summarize a little bit of what I've heard. It sounds to me like that map six is a very much a favorite for East County, Eastern North County, a lot of that. And I just want to emphasize that the East County part, the rural section is is being disenfranchised apparently. It's connected to Chula Vista and that area, and they have much more, we have much more in common with the local people of Alpine, Lakeside, El Cajon, Chula Vista, I'm not Chula Vista, but Santee. I think something should be done to shift that around some and and make the connections more compatible with the way we really live and work and have been doing for several years. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, anyone participating remotely, whether you've submitted an advanced request or not, would like to address the Commission. You're welcome to do so by raising a virtual hand, click the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're calling in by phone. Carrie Forrest, you have one minute to address the Commission.
I also would like to support the previous speaker. East County is being dismantled. Our voice is being diluted. Being merged with an urban area in South Bay just is not representative of our community. We belong with a supervisor that will listen to us, that will understand our needs and concerns. We are totally different than the rural, the urban areas of the city of San Diego and Chula Vista and such. And so we do deserve some consideration. We're being ravaged out here by all these different changes. And we need a strong supervisor to fight for us and to fight against the urban concerns that are dominating the Board of Supervisors right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Jones? Denise?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I just wanted to say that I support everything the previous two two speakers just said. They said exactly what I was gonna say.
Thank you. Not seeing any further virtual hands. That concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. And and thank you, those Members of the Public for being so concise. We'll move now to what I hope will be brief clarifying questions, but I did want to give Commissioners an opportunity in light of the rules and procedures we've been establishing to ask any questions particularly of Flow Analytics of either Alex or John. Concerning any of the matters, either Alex's brief on the maps or John's brief on the tools just now, including the new tool. Or anything related to Flow's work. I'll try to do this by hands. I've got Commissioner Diaz. Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Flow, for your presentation. I just wanted to I, and I don't know if this was an oversight, but I did, or just correct me if I'm wrong. I thought we we had, we were trying to understand the question of the bridge, the Coronado Bridge. And if there needs to be connectivity between the land that's it's touching and you know, where it's coming from. I think that's why Barrio Logan accidentally, I think it might have been oversight, that split up. That's just my theory, but I really want some clarification on this because I think there was also a question for legal counsel. Thank you.
There was indeed. And before I talk, I see if Alex or John wants to spend, let me ask first, Margaret, our counsel. I believe.
Yeah, I am here. Thank you, Chair Bame. I have prepared some information for the the Commission, which I will be sending out tomorrow. I communicated with the consultant on all the maps. And Barrio Logan, it, I don't believe it was maintained moving north because of the bridge. In my view, and I will provide this to you in writing. Contiguity can be achieved in other ways. Including with the regular ferry service from downtown. So if if Barrio Logan moves south. Then we could maintain a contiguous district through the downtown area and the ferry service. That's very clear from another part of the statutes of government redistricting, and I'll give that to you in writing.
Thank you for that. Alex or John, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I thank you, Margaret, for that information. And I think the I R C can now act upon that. So you know, looking at specific draft maps that have Barrio Logan with downtown or any area to the north. Knowing that it's not completely necessary to meet the continuity criteria and can help you give us, you know, in your motions instruction on how to proceed with other draft maps.
And during our discussion of motions, I'm sure a resident, very another maritime transport expert, Commissioner Larson will be happy to and and provide his background. Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, John, for that presentation. Quick question. On for each of the maps, you give us a sheet that shows the preservation of geographic integrity criteria. And the first item under there is the is you give us a percent of coys preserved in minimum districts. And it seems to me that it's built on a total number of coys of eighteen. It says, community builder submitted coys. I just want to understand that. What I heard tonight was we now have thirty five community builder submissions. So maybe that number is going to increase to thirty five, but nevertheless, it seems to me that that whole row that gives us a percent of coys preserved is based on a very, very small number of submissions on coys. Unless I'm misunderstanding that. Thank you.
John, if you have any comments, feel free, but I can field this one. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. The community builder is meant to take in public feedback, specifically their spatial boundary of their community of interest. But it doesn't specifically require that because we wanted to make it all inclusive. If people did not understand how to use the mapping tool, then they could write a submission at that time with that tool. So there are a number of, they are submissions from the community builder, but that doesn't mean they have an associated geometry or shape with them, but rather just a description. So what that line item in the statistics is showing is only the ones that have a shape associated with them, because that's how we're doing spatial analysis to understand is that area or community of interest split. If that, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I just, I still find it kind of misleading as a sort of a general percentage of coys preserved in minimum districts. Because it's, it's, it just seems to me a little bit of not a very accurate reflection of exactly of exactly how well we responded to the COI data. But that, that is, that does answer my question. Thank you.
If I could add to that, I think one of the the challenges there is one of the things we've noticed. I think there's another, I'm sorry, I don't have the, I don't have the document in front of me, but I believe there are some other line items in there that refer to number of C D Ps split, number of municipalities split, community plans. And a lot of the testimony that we're hearing about communities of interest reference those geographies. So for instance, Fallbrook is, you know, we're finding that in the data as a C D P. Boncel, city heights, and the, you know, city heights, I think, is coming from the one of the community plan core San Diego city data sets. And so those are being captured under those other line items. Because we're sort of, because we're cranking it out through the data. All of those different geographies are called something different when within the data. So I think it might be helpful maybe for us to just put at the top of the report or the top of that section, something that explains that those light line items. Each one captures different communities of interest. And we can maybe think a little bit about how best to explain that because I think you're right. If you just see that community builder submission, that isn't, that's not an accurate assessment of what, how many we've actually preserved. It is that that whole group. But they are broken up a little bit because so many people refer to their communities of interest as a different neighborhood that's broken up differently in the data. So we can work on a way to maybe better sort of message that. So it's a bit more clear.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Sherb.
Thank you, Chair Bame. And thank you, John, for the presentation. My question is I understand that on October fourteenth, along with the with with other maps, I think you had presented to the to the Commission a a map submitted by the public. I think that was called D S M map submission one. I was just wondering, have we received any other public map submissions that contain a fully drawn five district county map, other than that map that you had presented on the fourteen?
Yes, we received. Yes, we received one other map that was a paper map submission. That was a full county map.
Is that the one that, that we looked at today as the public submission map?
I believe that's, yes, that was the number three public map submission.
Yes. Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. And then maybe relatedly. So we haven't received any other five district map submissions through the DSM tool from the public. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So has there been any progress made in improving the usability of the DSM interface?
We have tested a, another version. And I, I think that's still in testing to determine whether or not to move forward with it. That does improve the performance. The trade off is that it removes significant amount of detail, which is a bit of a challenge. So yeah, so yes, there has been some testing, but I think there's still discussion on whether or not we want to move forward with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson.
I just wanted to ask about the, the numbering and the coloring on the maps. I focus in on district that has, that is the map that was produced by Pana for what has been traditionally District Four, because that's the district that I represent. But on the various iterations of the map, that color of the map changes from yellow to green and the number changes from what it was originally four to three. And can we make these maps more consistent? Because as I was trying to compare maps, I was very confused.
Well, I, I mean, I would say that going forward, we're going to consolidate the way that we do the numbering. And that's what Alex referred to earlier. We're going to look at population overlap. So a district's number, a new district number will be the same as the original district that it overlaps the most population with. So potentially that will answer your question or solve, or solve the dilemma of why the numbers don't seem to be consistent across the maps. So we use population counts to make that assignment between draft map districts and the original districts. We can't go and use labels of a coastal district to always call something the same number. That's a coastal district because not all draft maps possibly would have that. Or a rural central district because not all draft maps would have that. So hopefully that answers your question, Commissioner Hanson.
I guess it does, but I've never heard of that, the whole idea of population overlap. I mean, I guess that would answer why it's the way it is, but it is very confusing. And when people are talking about their own district and, and talking to us about their district, they're using the number of the district that they live in now. I live in District Four. So it's, it just confuses the conversation in my mind, but I've been confused before.
It is, it is confusing. And I agree with that, but it's not an easy, there's no easy solution. And so that's why it's important to clarify what people are talking about. Are you talking about the district as it currently exists? Or the talking about the district as it exists in a draft map? And Flo does include those overlaid maps in the materials. So you can get a sense for how the draft maps overlay with existing. And it's not always a clean map. It's not always a one-to-one correspondence for sure. It's a one-to-many correspondence. And that's where it gets confusing.
But we will certainly make sure to do all we can to address those concerns, as I mentioned in our last mission upons, and then we will move on.
Thank you. And thank you to Flow Analytics for the presentation. Can you hear me out there, John? Can you hear me, John? Alex? Okay.
Yes, we can.
So, so I've been looking at the Maal Foster maps, the DSM maps, and trying to synthesize the community of entries inputs. My question to you is, if I give to you elements like districts from certain drafts and say, you know, provide me what this looked like, you know, can you do that? Can you turn that around within a certain period of time? Or am I asking too much?
I think that that works well in the context of, you know, providing a motion that would say, you know, District One from Draft Map Five and District Two from Draft Map Six per se. That's something we can definitely, you know, work with and create a map for with a new motion. Of course, the caveat being, you know, as you cobble them together, I'm sure there's going to be things around the edges of each of these districts that are going to have to be revised to make sure that, you know, the equal population criterion is met or that we're keeping communities of interest or municipalities together. But yes, that's something, you know, it, it helps us to have those easily identifiable shapes, whether it is an existing municipality or it's a district that's part of a draft map currently.
If I could just add at our, I believe the next meeting on November 13th, that will really be the time for the commission to ask specific questions about what does this look like if we were to switch this neighborhood with this neighborhood and swap districts or, you know, things like that, where we will be doing the live scenario modeling. And you'll be able to see those numbers right there, you know, a matter of minutes or seconds that will be able to show you what certain things look like. That said, what I think what Alex said is important too, that you know, with regard to motions, that's the other place right now that we can sort of act on that input. But in terms of getting that sort of quick, let me just see this so I can decide whether or not I want to, whether or not it makes any sense, you know, whether or not it's going to work. That will be really focused on that November 13th meeting. That is, that is the intent of that meeting is to try to answer those questions as best we can.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And although the 13th is kind of far off, I don't want to bring a motion to the floor for the entire commission's consideration until I have looked at it and make sure it has a first pass through, one, the statutory requirements, and two, that it meets some of the CVAP requirements and the things that we're looking at. So what I'm proposing is that if I can send to you or to Ken, for instance, I would like for District One of Map Two to be cobbled together, as you said, with District Two of Map Three, and then so forth and so on, until I get all five maps with all five districts, you know, sort of cobbled together into one map and see what that looks like. That's what I'm after. I don't want to wait until the 13th to see what it looks like because I don't want to waste the commission's time. I want to hear and see what it looks like prior to that. And if it looks right, then I can make that motion and I can justify making that motion. And it doesn't have to be something I'm just sort of, you know, winging it, you know? So I wasn't going to ask you and Ken to consider that as a recommendation going forward and not wait until I have to make a motion on the 13th of November.
I would say we do. We have our weekly meeting tomorrow, Tuesday with council and Flo. And we can discuss that to, to see if there's a way that we could potentially put a process where you could get that kind of feedback prior to November 13th. So that's the, that's the best I can do at this point. We will discuss it tomorrow in our meeting with Flo and Council.
Okay, I appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. And I, I will mention again, because these are draft maps, I want to preserve the commission's ability to deal with these maps as flexibly as possible. The legal requirements are very complex. And while I know we're all committed to them, I also know we may have to ask for things that may not easily fit the legal criteria just to get at the key issues. And I think that process has been working reasonably well. So for all commissioners, please feel free to include in your motions, any questions or factors you'd like to see addressed. Commissioner Dustall, and then we'll turn to opening statements.
Thank you. I have a related question. It doesn't need to be answered now. Just something to think about in your meeting. It would be really helpful in our packets if we had the names of all the different communities like you had, like Bonzel and, and Rainbow and those kind of names on our maps. If we could get those on our, in our packets, I think that would really help the public and us as we're going through the meeting and hearing comments, seeing where exactly these are on the map. Thank you.
Thanks. And I'll ask Commissioner Inman and Flo to take that up as well. Very good. And Commissioner Dustle, I apologize for continuing to find creative ways to pronounce your name. I do know the right way to do it. I will get it right up. Appreciate your patience. All right. We now turn to map drawing commissioner statements. I'll remind commissioners that these will be under procedures we've discussed in several meetings in October. Statements should be of no more than one minute for the purpose of seeing where each other stand. Again, statements can refer to why you do or do not prefer a certain map based on the criteria, as well as any other succinct or relevant comments. I please ask you to identify one map, but no more than three in your comments. And staff remains ready to record and display this information upon request. After we have commissioned statements that will be called at random by the clerk, I'll call for motions on each map to provide Flo with additional directions for revision or other changes. Those will include, of course, discussion and a vote. So with that, David, I'll ask you to exempt me as I continue to try to keep the process going. But do get the other commissioners in random order and call on them for opening statements of no more than one minute.
Thank you, Chair Beam. We'll begin with Commissioner Diaz, followed by Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. I just want to thank the public for their testimony tonight. And it's just, it's a really great thing to hear our democratic process working for redistricting. One of the things that I noticed that, yes, I, there seemed to be a lot of public support for Draft Map Six. But as members of the public rightly pointed out, there are communities that are being split up. One I want to point in particular that runs across all maps, which is Bario Logan. And not just Bario Logan. It seems to also include Sherman Heights and Golden Hill has been split. I urge Flo to look closely at census block level data to make sure that all of those communities are intact as a community of interest. And, and as part of District One. The other is, we heard testimony from the Asian API community tonight supporting Map Six with suggested changes. And I would like to direct Flo to look at those, incorporate those changes, particularly keeping intact the communities of Nirmar Ranch, Miramesa, Ranch of Pesquitos, and looking closely at those communities between look, referring again to Map Six and D2 and D4. I also want to, yes. Sorry.
Commissioner.
Commissioner can complete your thought.
Sorry, that's one of many, but just making sure that keeping intact, try, not splitting tribal reservations as we're looking at East County and North County and land management agencies and special districts. There's a reason. I had another comment about the border, but I will, I think another commissioner might express that.
Commissioner Brown, followed by Commissioner Larson.
Hello. What I was thinking when I first started this meeting is completely different than what I'm going to be talking about right now. I first thought that Plan Number, or Map Number Eight was more along the lines of what I was expecting to see. So I believe that's one of that and Map Six are the two maps that seem to get the most votes from our audience tonight. And I think they still need to be tweaked quite a bit. If I'm looking at Map Six, I, I would like to try to keep the small communities that are just north of the, of the Highway 78 corridor, big cities, like such as Fallbrook and Valley Center and Rincon and Palma and, and Rainbow in, in the Camp Pendleton area. I'd like to try to keep that in with the cities on the court that are on the corridor of 78, but we're going to have to budge something and it's probably going to have to be Carlsbad again coming out. So if Carlsbad were to move into the coastal district instead of, you know, into, this is on Map Six, it would be into District Two. Then we're going to have to budge something out of there to be able to not have too many, because Carlsbad's a big city. So I think the idea that Flo has to try to help us be able to visualize it better, instead of us just trying to guess and then letting them figure something out. And I think we can be more accurate if, if we can play around with it and have them work with this for a little bit during the next week or so. And maybe we can come up with something a little bit closer to exactly what we want to end up with. Getting close and then going back to the drawing board and spending a couple more weeks before we get another one that is just close again. I think, I think this will help us hone in on it a little bit better. So am I supposed to make, I, I don't know if I need, need, need to make a suggestion on what should be drawn.
And but it, I'll ask you to hold it for the motion discussion, if that's okay at this point. So we thank you, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you.
Commissioner Larson, followed by Commissioner Pons.
Okay. First of all, I want to really thank the citizens of San Diego County, the 900-plus public comments, which we've received and probably many more to come. It shows a lot of thoughtfulness on the part of the presenters. I also want to thank Flow Analytics for the excellent accommodation of all these comments. It's our job. They have interim results right now. I think they've done a very splendid job so far of trying to map many comments and the other criteria we have onto a new set of lines. Personally, I'm very partial to the urban comments and concerns that directly impact our citizens. And I'm also very partial to the coastal communities of interest. For these reasons, I prefer Map Number Seven as probably the best approach so far. I can also accept Map Number Six, which also shows a very good understanding of the various communities of interest, which have presented their recommendations to us. I cannot accept Draft Number Eight. It breaks up the coastal community of interest into too many zones. And I, I was strongly favor number seven.
That's it. Commissioner Pons, followed by Commissioner Krugliak.
Yes, I too want to echo the fact that the comments and testimonials by the the public tonight was just outstanding and insightful. My comments goes to the issue of citizen voting age populations. I think that in each of the draft proposed maps, we have what I call a stronghold in any of those districts. And I define that stronghold as being anything above 57%. I believe that those dominant populations present a disadvantage to other races and ethnicities within those districts. As such, and based on the brief that we've got regarding Voting Rights Act and polarized voting, I'm going to make a motion later that we put a upper limit for the citizens voting age populations at no more than 57%. And then normalize, i.e. spread balance, the remaining populations to the maximum extent possible. Thank you.
Commissioner Krugliak, followed by Commissioner Russ.
So I like Map Six. I think it does a very good job of taking in the feedback we received to date. I think that it should be modified per the recommendations that we received today. I empathize with East County and think that we should do a bit more to try to keep East County as a unit, just as we talk about East County.
We lost your sound.
We talk about.
Commissioner Krugliak, we lost your less insert two.
Did you use, did you lose it in the room or did you lose it? Did you use, did you lose it in the room or did you lose it overall? Can everyone on the?
Yeah, it's just the room, just the room. We can hear you online.
Okay, so I'll just wait until, room, can you guys hear me again?
We can hear you now.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So if I could get a just maybe twenty more seconds. So I, I empathize with East County. I would like to make a motion that we try to keep East County together. One area I think that we could use to do that is that while I like the Panama, I think the Panama unites two disparate groups. It focuses on the BIPOC group, but when we heard feedback from the BIPOC community, it ended at City Heights. It did not go all the way into Normal Heights, Mission Hills, North Park, South Park, Kensington. Those are the districts of the LGBTQ community. And while I think that they have, they may vote comparably, I think that they are two different coys. And I think that there's no need to force them together if we could support other districts by separating them, but keeping them individually together.
Commissioner Russ, followed by Commissioner Chen.
Yes, when I first look at a map, there's a couple of things that I, that really stand out. One of which is whether or not Coronado and Point Loma, that they're segregated from what, what we've been calling District One. The other is up in North County as well. And for that reason, I like the way North County is represented in maps, on maps five and eight. But let me deal, let me, let me work from map six, since everybody was kind of focused on that. I would like to see on map six, a, a North County district as, as shown on maps five and eight, but you can't do that if you, if you include Carlsbad. Carlsbad has a hundred and fifteen thousand people. And of course, if you include those hundred and fifteen thousand, you can't include all that, all that northern, northern county area. So where, where are you going to get, if, if you put Carlsbad into the coastal area, the, the green area on, on map six, where are you going to get that? Well, I look down and I see that, that you have Terra Santa, San Marcos. You have Kearney Mesa, Claremont, you have those in, in the coastal, in the coastal zone area. And I, I consider Carlsbad a lot more coastal than those. And, and if you were to combine Terra Santa, Kearney, Kearney Mesa, Claremont Mesa, you get about a hundred and, about a hundred and twenty thousand people. So that would be a good quid pro quo to, to bring Carlsbad, I think, into the coastal district. And then, of course, what you would do is the Terra Santa, Kearney Mesa and Claremont Mesa. I realize that's going to bump down and have, have an influence on, on some of these other, these other areas. But I'd like to see Flo work, work there. I do like the Pana profile, the way it's presented here as it goes all the way to Interstate Five. Thank you.
Commissioner Chen, followed by Commissioner Inman.
Since I'm following Commissioner Russell, I will address Carlsbad. So moving in Carlsbad, I think Carlsbad very much wants to stay in a North County district very much because of the airport, because of the seventy-eight corridor, very much prefers that over being in a coastal district. I'll also keep my comments and my forty-eight seconds left focused on the Carlsbad versus Escondido issue. I think that's a big issue to address. I prefer map seven. Map six is okay. I think map seven is better because it keeps the Indian reservations up here more intact. It also keeps Fallbrook intact. We're going to upset somebody no matter what we do. And I guess to me, I'd rather upset them by not changing something versus changing something to upset them. So we also noticed a lot of people said, hey, keep Escondido in District Five. They think it's in District Five anyway, so it might not bother them that we don't change it. So given that trade off, I would prefer that we keep, as it shows in map six or seven, that Carlsbad stays in District Five. And that Escondido, even though we'd like to have it in, we can't because of the population numbers. But I think Fallbrook and those others, unincorporated areas need to stay in District Five also with Carlsbad. I would make the trade off between Fallbrook and Escondido and leave Fallbrook with Carlsbad and the other seventy-eight corridor cities.
Commissioner Inman, followed by Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
Well, I see you, there are two things we need to do. The first is an alignment with Commissioner Diaz on map six and the changes that were outlined there. I would like to see a motion to that effect. Map six is the one that I prefer the most. I also am in agreement with Commissioner Krugliak regarding rural East County. And for that, I actually favor the existing supervisory map. I believe that we could take that map and make some accommodations in it to come up with a solution that potentially would work for the rural East County. So I would, I would support two motions. One to move forward map six with the changes outlined by Commissioner Diaz. And another motion along the lines of what Commissioner Krugliak mentioned, possibly taking the existing supervisory boundaries and making adjustments or changes to those. So that's, the one thing I won't support is something that has three or more districts going across the East County. That's just simply too many. And several of our maps do that. So I would strongly oppose anything that has three or more districts in the East County. Thank you.
Co-Vice Chair, before we continue, I just want to clarify. Commissioner Man, when you were mentioning your second potential motion with Commissioner Krugliak, was that also working from map six or was that working from the existing districts?
Existing districts or some version thereof. Yes.
Thank you.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina, followed by Commissioner Dustle.
Thank you. I support draft max map six and eight. I also support Commissioner Diaz's comments as well as Commissioner Krugliak's comments. So I'm with you, Ken. We differ on the number of rural districts, but that's okay. And I don't care for map five, I think. So here we go. Look forward to it and thank the public for their comments. It was very helpful.
Commissioner Dustle, followed by Commissioner Serbin.
Thank you. I agree with a lot of what everybody said, so I'll try not to repeat anything. One thing that I did want to say is I do like the idea of starting from the current district maps. And at the very least, like I said, seeing where those lines are on every map we draw. Because I think one of the things, I really appreciate all the public comment and it's super important and it helps us to draft our maps. But I think a reasonable inference from people who aren't commenting is that they like their district. So I think we need to kind of consider that when we're drawing our maps is that we're not just pulling apart people's districts completely just because, you know, to, to satisfy what the people have commented, have said to the exclusion of keeping them, them together. I hope that was coherent, but I agree with a lot of everyone else's. I'll stop.
Commissioner Serbin, followed by Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Thank you, David. With the chair's indulgence, I'd like to ask for an additional minute or two, since I missed the other meeting due to that car crash. Is that okay, Chair? I haven't had a chance to speak to the public in a while and I just wanted to apologize to the public as well as to the commission for missing that last map meeting. Just want to let you know that this work is very important to me. The last time I was in this room, I was on the other side of this dais in your seats. So thank you to the public for being here tonight, for offering your input. I'd like to invite you to draw, to submit maps. We have black blank paper maps available with the staff if you'd like to do so. So thank you again for being here. I wanted to address the minimal change doctrine that one commenter had, had brought up as well as, as well as, I think Commissioner Dustle kind of brought it up as well. You know, we did, as a commission, consider a, a map that was, that sort of tried to preserve the existing condition that was presented as springboard map one on October seventh. And to my understanding, this commission rejected that as a, as a concept to further consider. So in seeing and considering what the public has given us today, my consideration is that while map eight had some support seemingly, you know, from, from certain groups, I'd like to note that my impression is that map six has had a lot more of support of multiple communities coalescing in support of that map. And, you know, those, those multiple organizations include Surf Rider, Pana, Veterans, North County Equity Justice Coalition, CARE, Carlsbad Citizens for a Friendly Airport, the LGBTQ Center. Map six's positives, as listed by those, those groups, were that D one is a majority minority border district. D two becomes a coastal district. D three creates density for BIPOC refugee communities. D four is, creates a cohesive rural tribal district and D five creates a seventy-eight corridor. All of those principles I strongly support. I don't think we don't, we have much longer time to deliberate over multiple maps. I believe it's time for us to narrow our discussion down to one map. And so with that, I'm ready to support a motion that contains the following provisions and urge my fellow commissioners to do so as well. That motion is that we approve draft map with the, draft map six with the following changes. Those changes are from, from District Four to District Two, move the community planning group areas of Miramesa, Sorento Valley and Pinosquitos. And then from District Two to District Five, move the community planning group areas of Terra Santa, Navajo, Lake Murray and Allied Gardens. And then from District One to District Four, move the communities of Alpine and Pine Valley. And from District Two to District One, move the communities of Logan Heights, Sherman Heights and Barrio Logan. Generally, I'd ask that the demographer preserve the coy polygons that we've ID'd through public input as well as the jurisdictional geographies such as municipalities, CPGs and school districts. For example, the Mountain Empire School District. And I would also advise the demographer to use Interstate Eight and other highways and major arterials as corridors rather than boundaries to the extent necessary to do so. As a tertiary consideration, I would advise that our, that our demographer attempt to empower the AAPI community of interest in District Two and Latino community of interest in Districts One, Five and Three in that order. Thank you.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia, followed by Commissioner Hanson.
Yes, thank you. And I also want to thank the public for coming, not only tonight, but over the course of the last several months to give us their public input. So we heard a few major themes tonight. A lot of support for map six, some support for map seven. I think very little support for five and eight. And I would agree that there are two maps that I think we can go forward with, with some tweaks, six and seven. Lot of support for the Panama and conflicting support in District Five or for the, you know, seventy-eight corridor. And I have a question. I think we need, we need to look at a map that shows District Five with Escondido and all of the other cities, municipalities, and then going north to Fallbrook, Bonzel and all of those and excluding Carlsbad. And I think we need to understand if there are VRA concerns in that area. I don't think that's. The other thing I want to point out is that we heard, we got a whole bunch of ecomments that were not, you know, voiced tonight. And several of those had to do with East County and had to do with the tribal reservations. And so I think map six is problematic on that particular issue. And I think this map six is a little problematic with the way it draws District Five. I actually like the idea of going back and trying what, what can suggested and looking at the existing map and seeing if we can use some of those existing lines to perhaps tweak the rural East County and, and, and just respond to some of the other comments that we've gotten. I think that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
I want to thank all the people that commented today and point out how important it is. Because prior to that, if you remember back to the dots on the map that John shared with us, the only people that we had heard from before tonight were a few from Ramona. Whole rest of the East County was empty of blue dots. Well, now we have a very different feel about that region and it's going to have to, it's going to cause us to rethink some of the conclusions that we have drawn based on the lack of information that we have tonight. My initial response was like, Jack, I like District Five and Eight because I like the configuration of the North County District in that example, those examples. But I can certainly see why particularly the Asian Pacific Islander community prefers map six. Because that was the group that wanted to join the coastal communities, Asian communities, actually even including students at UCSD, UCSD with the inland Kearney Mesa, Conway, as well as Rancho Pinosquitos. And that map, map six does that. I really don't feel like I can make a decision without really analyzing the new information and then reanalyzing the things I thought I already knew before we got that. So that's kind of where I stand.
Thank you, Chair Baim. That concludes Commissioner's comment.
Thanks very much. As a means to bridge to motions, let me just add a couple of thoughts. Just a couple of quick thoughts. I slightly disagree that we hadn't heard from East County. I think we heard a lot more in person tonight, but I think there's been a lot of ecomment. I do think there's a conundrum with regard to that, even working from the existing boundaries, given the requirements we face on unincorporated areas being included. And I would just urge commissioners, whatever motions we take tonight, do keep that geographic requirement in mind because it is slightly different from some of the other requirements we've got. I do want to associate myself with Commissioner Diaz's comments on keeping those communities together. Commissioner Russ's, again, impressive quick math on pulling together population figures. I do think that's helpful. I do like the idea, and I will probably ask commissioners first for a motion of some kind, working from the existing district map, simply because we haven't talked about that before. And I think that might take a little more time than some of the other motions relating to the existing draft maps that we have. That's where I'm headed at the moment. I did want to mention, however, that I want to be extremely careful with how the Panama quote unquote is addressed with those communities and especially as we get into El Cajon. Because what I've heard and what I've read in the ecomments involves a lot of different things going on in El Cajon. A lot of different communities of interest, if you will, intersecting. A relatively sizable community very close to several different boundaries. And frankly, one we haven't talked about enough. And as someone who has enjoyed everything from ethnic festivals in areas just west of El Cajon to going with people from El Cajon to some of the rodeos in Lakeside and elsewhere, I really, really appreciate where that intersection happens. So I hope we can devote some time to that. But we don't have to devote that tonight necessarily. I would just like to see it tasked as part of one of these motions. So beyond that, we're now ready to move to motions. Thank you, commissioners, by the way. And again, I'll just second again my thanks for the discussion. Thanks for taking it up. I did want to mention for Commissioner Pons, working in the kind of motion you mentioned tonight may be slightly challenging in and of itself. What I'd ask her is if we can work that in to one of the motions we're talking about as one element for Flo to look at within a mapping exercise. And then let's see how the discussion goes, but I think we can find a way to address it that way. That's acceptable.
Acceptable, thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that. All right. So as we move to motions, again, this is primarily focused on how we find maps, but certainly the ideas we've heard. We'll try to go one at a time. We'll keep it to fifteen minutes per map. And I do note it's already nine ten PM, so I'll try to dispense with the introductory remarks. On that basis, and with the reminder that we may end up dropping the map, we could see an issue with that, but I'll try to reserve some time again. Commissioner Krugliak.
So I'd like to make a motion that tries to bring East County together, but rather than base it off of the existing maps, I'd like to springboard off of map seven. And so, and I'd like to actually propose some changes beyond just trying to keep East County together. So what I'd like to see, if possible, is linking Oceanside Vista, Carlsbad, San Marcos, all of Camp Pendleton, going down into Rancho Santa Fe and south but north of Miramesa and the regions. Going down into Rancho Santa Fe and south but north of Miramesa and the regions that were called out specifically as. Asking to be included in the coastal district for the Asian and Pacific Islander community, which were Miramesa. And a couple of other regions in that area as well as convoy. So going down above those regions. And therefore keeping Escondido with Fallbrook, Boswell, Paula. All of the other North County regions that it's currently not with, but that make up the rest of North County. And having that district go down and include the majority of East County. In order to make that work.
Commissioner Kogak, I'm sorry. We have a little bit of an issue in terms of capturing the motion. And this is for all Commissioners, that we need to start with as concisely as possible. A description of the motion. And from what you're saying, I think it's extremely well thought out. But if you don't mind, I may ask you to wait. And maybe during an ongoing discussion of another motion formulate that a little more. A little more fittingly for something on the screen.
I've got it in front of me on District Builder. I can just show it. And actually, that's the comment for Commissioner Pons too, is that if you wanted to sanity check something, District Builder will let you move very quickly to do that.
I'm not sure I quite understood that. You you're saying you've got the motion ready?
I have a kind of not a map that's got it in terms of the way that we have it in District Scenario Modeler. But just in terms of what those districts could look like and it's sanity check that the numbers fit. I have that very quickly on District Builder.
Okay.
Because that just lets you very quickly sanity check.
Right. But before, but before we proceed with that, we need to be discussing it under the procedures we agreed on through a motion.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree. So I mean, I.
Do you see the motion on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. Can you finish putting that into words on that motion?
Sure. So.
And preferably at dictation speed.
Yes. Okay. So another district is Escondido North and East County. Period. Coastal District expanded to include the regions that were highlighted by the Asian Pacific Islander community in this discussion. District one expanded to include Barrio Logan. And pushed south. And potentially maybe pushed a little bit north to allow for the size. And then what's currently the Panama focusing on keeping the BIPOC region. Which may be at the expense of Mission Hills, Hillcraft, North Park, South Park, Kensington. But not City Heights.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I want to make sure they're capturing the locations right. Okay. Can fix typographical errors in a motion in a moment. I appreciate staff trying to keep up with it. Commissioner Kogak, does that capture it or is there more?
I I think that's largely the the concept.
Okay. So I had introduced and frankly had had planned to take a motion from the existing map. But this is a motion on the table. Do we have a second? Commissioner Chen, is that a second or a separate request for speaking?
It's both.
Okay. So we have a second. Thank you for that. All right. So that is the motion on the floor. I'll try to give commissioners a moment to absorb that while staff also make sure they captured it. But start calling on commissioners, starting with Commissioner Chen, since he said he's got more to say. And then we'll go from there. Fifteen minute clock though has started. Commissioner Chen.
So we're discussing this motion? I'm sorry. I actually wanted to pick up another motion. That's all. So I will wait.
Okay. No, it's this motion right now. And you're seconding it, correct?
Correct.
So Commissioner Brown, Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Just just a quick question from me where it says about three fourths of the way down. A bit north to allow for the five, is that five highway five or is that? And I thought it was some other word and it got typed in as a five.
Commissioner Krugliak.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's right. We can probably just say a bit more if I meant to say to allow for the size. The population equality.
The size.
Requirement, exactly.
Okay, not five, but size. Okay.
For the size. Okay, very good. So Commissioner Inman, Co-Vice Chair Garcia. Commissioner Diaz, Commissioner Hanson.
Chairman, I have a quick point of order.
Yes, sir.
Is it district one as described in map seven or the current district one?
I believe all of this is relative to map seven. Correct, Commissioner Krugliak?
Yes, although when this is implemented, it will look closer to the current district one. Excluding Coronado and Point Loma.
Thank you. So Commissioner Inman.
Yes, thank you. So Commissioner Krugliak, so where do we get the rural East County District? That's what I can't quite visualize here.
Yeah. So basically it falls into Escondido, Fallbrook, Boswell, all of North County. It has to go down and it basically encompasses all of East County in that same district.
Okay. And so it's not going to wrap around through Chula Vista.
It does not wrap around. It does not go into Chula Vista.
Okay. So it looks like, as you said, it looks a lot like the current. Rural East County District in the current supervisor on districts. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kolestra Garcia.
Yeah, I I don't, I I guess I that answered my question. But the current map has actually a north. North County Rural District and a East County, South County. It's not one, there's not just one east rural area, but that's okay.
Correct.
So it's not really at all like map seven.
I I didn't know whether to start from the current district because there's that weird U shape that you kind of have to undo a little bit versus starting from. Not seven. I think it ends up somewhere in the middle of those two.
I'll just point out that the the two, we received two letters from the Indian Tribal Reservations. And they expressly requested, you know, sort of the North County. Rural area and then the the South County Tribal Reservations asked to be along the I eight. So.
Commissioner Diaz.
That is hard to do with population.
Commissioner Diaz. You're muted. Commissioner, we'll come back to you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I had screens and I unmuted myself. Sorry. Um, I guess my only, my, my only concern about this map is that, again. You know, we really have to look at the demographics, the changing demographics of East County. And I I was actually going to propose a different motion later on, but again. I, you know, this map seven, the way. I I do not support going back to the original supervisory lines. And I would not support this motion based on, if anything closely resembles that, I would not support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson.
It does not support, it does not look like the current supervisory district.
Commissioner, I'm going to ask you for reasons of timeliness as well as fairness. Yeah. I'm going to try to keep the discussion moving. I promise you and other motioners will have a chance before a vote to offer any wrap up comments. But I'd rather not be a discussion back and forth each time. Commissioner Hanson.
Hi, when you spoke this. And a Rancho Santa Fe period. And then you were talking about a different district that started with Escondido North and East. With that, to me, that makes a difference because you're talking about two different places there, that that should be a period. Because Escondido is not in the same district as Oceanside and Vista, right?
Yeah, that would be a typo. So if we could just change that to a period, sorry, Chairman.
Excuse my grammar. Can't help myself.
And Commissioner Krugliak, I'll ask you to, because now the grammar is getting even harder to follow. While the discussion continues, if you can get those two sentences straightened out. Maybe with an email, maybe with something to read in a moment, that would be great. We still have several commissioners who wish to speak and it's left. Commissioner Chen.
Are we ready for a new motion? No, we're not. So I'm just waiting for the new motion. So let me lower my hand for now.
Thank you. Commissioner, sorry.
I got dibs on the new motion.
Very good. Commissioner Brown.
I was going to ask about what Commissioner Krugliak is working on right now. The same area. So I was confused by what was being written there, but she's going to correct it. So that'd be great.
Commissioner Inman, thank you. Commissioner Inman.
Forgot to lower my hand. I apologize. Sorry.
Commissioner Dostal.
Thank you. I was just wondering, I really want to understand what Commissioner Krugliak is proposing. I think it's probably a really good idea, but right now I just don't understand it. So I was wondering if we could move on while she types it out, move on to another motion, since we only have half an hour left.
I'd like to, but the motion was offered and seconded and I was told we had it ready. So Commissioner Krugliak, could you please, do you have the grammar fixes ready?
Oh, I was just going to clarify. I think that the grammar fixes are probably. Fine, except for maybe after in the discussion, we could change that from a comma to a period.
So what are we doing after the words Rancho Santa Fe?
That was a period. That was already fixed. And then maybe after the word size, district one ending at size comma, maybe have that be a period as well.
We still have those words Escondido, North and East County in the third line.
That represents the district.
Could we get a sentence on that, please?
Okay, as a separate district. There you go.
As the saying goes, we need a verb.
I would change R as to are. There you go. Escondido North and.
Very good. Okay. Does that clean it up for you?
I hope so.
It's North County, correct? After Escondido? That's what I wanted to, that's what I want to confirm. Or is it north of the area, north of Escondido or something like that?
I believe it's areas north of Escondido.
Escondido and areas north of Santa Fe.
And that that conclude, that includes Escondido, the city.
Yes.
Okay, does that capture it? Commissioner Krugliak?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chen. As the seconders, is that accurate?
Is that, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
All right. Seeing no other speakers, I'm about to call for a vote. I will ask commissioners in offering motions. Please have the motion in wording first. We really don't have time to work out the language now. Let me ask Alex or John or Commissioner Inman, from a strictly process point of view. Is this instruction sufficient for you to implement?
I believe it's sufficient to start. I fully suspect there might be some follow up questions to make sure we're accurately drawing this motion. And of course, we'll handle those questions in public. Commissioner Inman.
I believe the rural East County District is in here by omission. So this defines four districts. The fifth one is the rural East County, which isn't being defined.
No, there's five sentences here and East County is included in Escondido and areas north comma and East County are separate districts.
So that goes all the way down to the southern border?
I think that depends on, I think we'll leave that to flow. I don't think that necessarily needs to be defined in the motion.
Vice Chair Garcia, was that a request for the floor? Okay, with that, we'll call for a vote. Commissioner, David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Bame. Commissioner Serbin.
I believe Commissioner Serbin has a hand up.
I'm sorry, who's speaking? Commissioner Diaz, was that you?
Yeah, I was just saying that I noticed Commissioner Serbin's hand up. I didn't.
Oh, no, that was for the next motion.
Commissioner Serbin.
We spent so much time on this, I gotta say yes.
Commissioner Russ.
Yes.
Commissioner Chen.
Yes.
Commissioner Inman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pons.
Yes.
Commissioner Dostal.
No.
Commissioner Diaz.
No.
Co-Vice Chair Caterina.
Yes.
Commissioner Krugliak.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
No.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
No.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Chair Bame.
No.
Motion passes with Commissioner Dostal, Diaz, Larson, Garcia and Chair Bame voting no, all other commissioners being present and voting aye. Nine votes aye, five votes no.
And I will ask the staff per request, I don't think everyone heard, but from Commissioner Larson to work on the grammar with Commissioner Krugliak. So that it reads very clearly. I think the intent is very clear and we won't have any issues with that. Now, commissioners, it is now nine thirty two. What I will do is take, rather than have a competition rush to the floor, is ask commissioners for a very brief summary of a motion they'd like to make. See where those motions are and then formally take the motion. I'm only doing this procedurally because of time constraints, but I want to make sure everyone has a chance to suggest a motion. And then we'll see which ones we can take first. So Commissioner Chen was the first one I heard saying he had a motion. Then Commissioner Serbin. Then Commissioner Russ, then Co-Vice Chair Garcia. I think that's all the hands. And then Commissioner Inman. Thank you. Okay, so in just. Okay, so, in just a few words, Commissioner Chen?
I'd like to start with map seven, I'd like to move Barrio Logan to District One. And then there were some East County corrections, which I think were, I didn't note them all. I think Commissioner Shervin has them, a few others have them, but some other corrections to East County, which I think will come up in other motions. But that's basically, I'd like map seven with the Barrio Logan fix and East County fixes.
Thank you, Commissioner Shervin?
So my motion would be what I described earlier, which is draft map six with the following changes. So the communities
I'm actually gonna cut you off there, because I think you did a great job reading them before, and I hope, commissioners, do you want to give a quick
You need them in the record? It's Mir Mesa, Sorento Valley PQ from D4 to D2, Navajo, Tierra Santa, Lake Murray, Allied Gardens from D2 to D4, Alpine Valley from D1 to D4, Logan Heights, Sherman Heights, Barrio Logan from D2 to D1. And those communities are communities defined by the Community Planning Group boundaries. And so, those are the primary consideration, the direction and consideration given. And then generally preserve the coy polygons that we've identified through public input and jurisdictional geography, such as municipalities, school districts, and then using arterials and highways as corridors rather than boundaries. And then the tertiary, or last consideration being the empowerment of AAPI coy in District Two, and then Latino coy in Districts One, Five, and Three, in that order.
Thank you.
Chair, may I remind the commissioner? This is Barbara.
I emailed Keith the text.
Yes, please, if we can slow down a little bit, staff are really trying their hardest to take the motion.
Yeah, I'll make sure we have the wording when we get to the full wording up, when we take up the motion. But for right now, if, Commissioner Shervin, you've got that electronically, please email it to staff. It's been read out loud twice now, so I think commissioners know what we're talking about. Let me take the other commissioners who have motions to request, and then see where we are.
Is it to Keith that that should go?
I'm sorry?
Is Keith the person who the motion document should go to?
They have it.
Commissioner Russ?
Yes, I'd like to work with map number six and essentially make the northern district similar to maps number eight and five. Move Carlsbad into District Two, the coastal commission, coastal district, and then take Tierra Santa, San Marcos, Navajo, Currie Mesa, those there toward the eastern part of what's in District Two now in map six. And take that and put it into whomever's going to own Miramar, for example. Whatever district covers Miramar.
Thank you. Commissioner, Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Yes, I am interested in probably map six or seven, I'm not sure, but I would like to see it a district drawn with Escondido, San Marcos, Vista, Oceanside, to the northern border, to the eastern border. So respecting what the North County tribal reservations describe to us, so the North County tribal reservations in that district. Moving Carlsbad, period. Move Carlsbad south into the coastal district. And I will defer to flow to then make the rest of those districts work with regards to population size. The period. One last sentence. The ultimate goal is to have, in the East County, two rural unincorporated districts, a sort of a North County and a South County. Rural district, like we heard from the mostly east county, you know, south of South County citizens, residents who spoke tonight. Thank you.
Again, just as short as we can right now. Let staff catch up on that. Very good. Commissioner Inman?
Just to clarify, I think Commissioner Shervin captured my motion. What I would propose was essentially what Commissioner Diaz initially said. Map six incorporating the Asian solidarity collective input and incorporating Barrio Logan appropriately in the south district. Full stop.
All right, so those are five separate motions we have right now. We have one map already tasked under the motion by Commissioner Krugliak. Could I ask if there's a way to merge some of these motions along lines of what Commissioner Inman just said? So let me just take that, and again, I apologize for doing it this way, but it seems the best use of time. Commissioner Shervin, did what Commissioner Inman say just now, is that already captured in what you had, or can be captured?
It sounded like to me, I'll leave it up to Commissioner Inman to make the determination for himself, I don't want to speak for him.
Did you pick the areas based on the Asian solidarity?
Yes, yes, Commissioner Inman, those, these movements from District, one district to the other, and the communities that are listed were taken from notes based on what was communicated to us from the public input.
Okay, then I'm fine supporting Commissioner Shervin's motion, and you can strike one.
Okay, so let me ask staff to work with Commissioner Shervin and Commissioner Inman on getting that clarified. And when it's clarified, we will take it up, I'm sure there'll be time for adequate discussion of that one.
And I believe my motion is essentially the same as Commissioner Shervin's, except it starts with map seven.
That was my next question, was the Commissioner Chen, the detail you've offered on Barrio Logan to District One and the East County fixes, are those covered by Commissioner Shervin's motion?
I believe they are, so it's essentially the same as Commissioner Shervin's, just starting with map seven.
Okay. Is there a way we could start, you could join that motion by starting from map six? Is there something else missing that from map seven?
The critical piece, I don't want us to fall for recency input. We have a lot of input from the Fallbrook residents that want to be a part of the Carlsbad-San Marcos corridor, and the map six drops them out of that. Like I said, if we're gonna upset somebody, I'd rather upset them by lack of action, leaving Escondido outside of that versus taking proactive action to upset people, which would be moving Escondido in and taking Fallbrook and those other unincorporated areas out. So that's the difference in my mind between map six and seven, and that's why I want to start with map seven.
It's different. Commissioner Shervin, I'm sorry. To me, it looks, I see what Commissioner Chen is saying, I mean, it's different enough that it does almost, it arguably warrants another draft app to explore that concept.
That's exactly the clarification I'm looking for, so Commissioner Chen says probably another map. We'll come back on how Commissioner Garcia's app relates to that. Commissioner Russ, you had also referred to map six. Are you following closely enough what Commissioner Shervin said to add what might be needed from your motion?
As well as I can, Chair, as well as I can.
Okay, all right, so let's keep working on Commissioner Shervin's motion in more detail, and then Commissioner Russ, I'll see, we'll see what we can take up from that. Commissioners Garcia and Chen, you both referred to map seven, and given the ultimate goal point that Co-Vice Chair Garcia offered, is there a way to merge your two motions into one?
Since Commissioner Garcia wants to move Carlsbad in the coastal district, I'm very much against that, so I don't think so.
Okay, very good.
And Chair Bame, I just, coming from the point of view that I believe we need to see a map. I like all of Commissioner Shervin's stipulations, all the changes that he's recommending, and that would be fine with me. I just think that we need to see a map that shows a Latino community of interest that we've heard so many people come forward and tell us about in North County, and that means taking Carlsbad out and putting Escondido in and going all the way.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think that, actually, my motion and Commissioner Garcia's motion can be, can be conjoined there, I do.
Okay, so, let me start with, do we now, let me go back to Commissioner Shervin's motion. If commissioners don't mind, I may take that one first, because I think it's closest to actually being in the form of a motion. Commissioner Shervin, is this correct?
I mean, it looks like staff only just made formatting changes, so if it's essentially the same, then yes.
Hey, we need that JX geographies fixed.
Oh, that's jurisdictional.
Good.
CPG stands for Community Planning Groups.
Now, we're already at 9:44, which means we're going to have to depart from our 15-minute promotion.
And I'm sorry, Chair, just to specify, in this paragraph describing these communities, I'm referring to these communities specifically as they're defined by the community planning boundaries.
So community planning boundaries?
Yeah, so Mir Mesa is its own community planning boundary, Sorento Valley, Peniscutus, Allied Gardens, these are, these are communities within the city of San Diego that are better defined.
Yeah, as always, again, the key is for flow to understand that.
Yeah.
All right. So unless there's objection, I'm gonna go ahead and take Commissioner Shervin's motion, which he's offering now.
Yes.
Right? Commissioner Inman, you're willing to second that?
I am willing to second, could you ask flow if they're comfortable with the words, please?
That was the next thing I wanted to do, thank you. Alex, John, can you offer any specific questions or points you want clarified at this stage?
No, but I will thank Commissioner Shervin, we do have those areas, I understand what you mean by the community planning areas or groups, so I believe we'll be able to move forward, thank you.
And Alex, I don't see, or hear you somewhere, okay? Discussion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, sorry, I must have cut out a little bit there. I just said I believe we have what we need to move forward, and I agree, we understand what you mean, Commissioner Shervin, by community planning areas or groups, so those are defined by existing GS data. Thanks.
I see hands from Commissioners Chen and Russ and Co-Vice Chair Garcia, are those about this motion?
No, no.
You don't have to take them down necessarily, as long as I know to ignore them, it's okay.
No, they're not about the motion.
Okay, good, so, any discussion? Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Thank you, I just have a quick question, I see the tertiary consideration. So if Commissioner Shervin could clarify for me, it says AAPI coy in D2 and Latino coy in D1, D5 and D3, and I'm, my motion, like I said, the priority concern for me was the Latino coy in D5. So, just wondering if I, you know, if, if my motion would be somehow collapsed into this one, would we see two maps, two options?
Well, I, Chair, I had thought that, you know, when you had mentioned that, it made me think that with draft map six, I think we do, we do see some, we do see empowerment of the Latino coy. I mean, looking at the demographic numbers presented by flow, D1 has almost a 60% Latino population, and as well as D5, 38%, so I think if you're, if that's what you're seeking, I think we're satisfying that. But it doesn't look like I'm speaking to what you're saying.
Yeah, no, that's not what we've heard, so that clarifies it for me, thank you, Chair Bame, I'll keep my motion in place.
Very good. Any further discussion of this motion? Commissioner Diaz?
No, a quick, quick question about Pine Valley. I, it's a little far east. But I'm willing to support this, but I just, I would like to visualize it a little bit better. That's all, thank you for putting such a detail.
Any other commissioners wishing to speak, because we'll move to a vote. David, would you please call the roll for a vote on this motion offered by Commissioner Shervin, seconded by Commissioner?
Thank you, Commissioner Krugliak? Commissioner Diaz?
Sorry, on this motion, yes.
Commissioner Shervin?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman? Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chair Bame, that motion passes unanimously with all commissioners being present voting aye.
Very good, thank you for that. So in, as far as I can follow, we now have commissioners, the most potential motions from Commissioner Chen, Commissioner Russ, and Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Actually, I think that Commissioner Garcia's and my motion can be, can be conjoined. And, and, and even though I have directed flow to, to take the, you know, take the numbers from Tierra Santa, it wasn't San Marcos, it was Tierra Santa. I forget.
I think you meant, I think the meaning there was Claremont Mesa, right?
And San Carlos and Claremont Mesa, you know what, I take those out, and as Commissioner Garcia said, where flow thinks, thinks it would be good to take them out, I think in that, that that penetration of the, of the green on map six, that's probably the place, that would be a good place. But I think Commissioner Garcia and my motion can be co-joined.
So, let me just ask Commissioner Russ, what, can we bring, there we go, very good, thank you, staff. Commissioner Russ, what words do we need changed or moved from your motion into Commissioner Garcia's motion to motion five?
The northern border, northern border to the eastern border, okay, and as far as, and as far south as the numbers will allow us to go, Carlsbad south and the coastal district, defer to flow for those districts regarding population size, to rural, I, you know what, I like her motion better than mine. I'll go with her, I'll withdraw my motion, I'll go with hers, I think she's got it.
No, I've said enough tonight, I'm not going to make any more comments other than to say, thank you, Commissioner Russ, that gentlemanly and well done. Before we take up the motion, I just want to see, Commissioner Garcia, I understand what you're saying with the ultimate goal in that last sentence. I just want to see if you want to change the language at all, because this will be posted publicly so that the meaning is a little clearer.
Okay, I guess we could just, if I could just use some of the language from, I guess it was Commissioner Chen's about no, uh, whose was it, with the language from Sonia Diaz?
Yeah, Commissioner Shervin's, I think, is what, because mine is now going to be Commissioner Shervin's, except starting with map seven.
Yeah, I, sure. I don't know that I need that detail, but it was basically the, you know, AAPI, the, you know, the Barrio Logan.
How about if you combine six and five together?
Yeah, I guess, you know, incorporate AAPI and the, you know, comments about AAPI and Barrio Logan neighborhoods. neighborhoods in there.
Okay, for the sake of timeliness, we'll leave it at that. And are we working, are they working this from map six or map seven? I assume map six at the beginning, correct?
Not gonna be.
It doesn't, I kind of think it's map seven. But it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, and again, flow will capture the conversation, so we'll ask them to refer to map six as well, but map seven is the primary source. Okay, so that's a motion from Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Russ, you're seconding?
Yeah, I will, yeah, and actually, map seven, that's a good map to start with, that's fine.
Very good, okay, okay. And for the record, I'll point out, while there may not have been a lot of active support for map seven during discussion and some of the comments we received, the comments reflected here seem to me to be reflecting some of those comments that were earlier with regard to map six, so good differentiation there. Discussion on this motion. David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak? I didn't catch it, Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman? Chair Bame, that motion passes unanimously with all Commissioners being present and voting aye.
Very good. Let's move then to, I believe, Commissioner Chen's is the only motion left on the table.
And just from a parliamentary point of view, just to clarify for staff as well, these aren't motions, we're talking about ideas that might become motions. So no motion needs to be withdrawn, it's not a motion until it's formalized.
Very well. Within the bounds that the instruction, the point of these, of these paragraphs, of these instructions are to instruct flow, we will take that up that way.
So if you can rewrite motion two to be essentially the same as Commissioner Serbin's motion three, except starting with map seven?
Let me just ask John and Alex, do you have any clarifications needed or questions?
No, I think with that one, understanding Commissioner Serbin's, we can move forward with that motion, thank you.
What map did Serbin start with?
Six.
Six.
So the difference, it's a trade-off between Escondido and then Fallbrook and the Indian Reservation issues that were brought to us.
Do you need a second?
Hold on a moment, hold on, hold on. And I should just confirm with Commissioner Inman and Flow Analytics, if this motion also passes, you will still be within the bounds of capacity for providing these maps by November 13th, correct?
Yeah, can I, can I, thank you, Commissioner. Can I clarify when you say needed by the 13th, the meeting is on the 13th?
Prepared, prepared in time in association with the rules we have for the meeting on the 13th.
For the 11th.
Which I believe is a special meeting, correct?
It is a special meeting, true.
Yeah, but we also have a holiday that week. So Alex, I think we're really talking about the finals, moving to the Commissioners, no later than Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, ideally Tuesday at the latest.
Yeah, I believe that, we can fulfill that, yep.
Very good, so I just wanted to clarify that as finishing remarks. All right, so Commissioner Chen's motion on the table, same as Commissioner Serbin's, except to start from draft seven, moved by Commissioner Chen, seconded by Commissioner Serbin, did I hear that?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson?
Yes.
Co-Vice Chair Katerina?
Yes.
Commissioner Krugliak?
Aye.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman? I didn't catch it, Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Serbin? Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously with all Commissioners being present and voting aye.
Thank you, very good Commissioners. Thank you, very good Commissioners. As the clerk just mentioned, we will clarify all these motions and put them into formal language, but it is our understanding that these motions as instructions to Flow Analytics have been passed and approved by the IRC.
Well, I may have been, what I was saying is that these ideas that then became motions weren't in themselves motions. So the ones that were voted on are motions, are formal motions, and so-
Right, those were the results, good, all right. So we'll get that into, into proper language, and I don't think we'll need to change language at all, we'll just need to have them in a consistent format, staff, so the officers and I will work on that. Thank you, Commissioners, and members of the public who stayed with us. We still, for those of you watching virtually, we still have five members of the public in the room, thank you for staying. That concludes the business before the independent redistricting commission tonight. Our next meeting will be an IRC special meeting, please note the time and date, Saturday, November 13th, starting at 11:00 a.m., to be held virtually via Zoom. At that meeting, we'll discuss changes to the next set of IRC draft maps as just captured in motions, and as Mr. McKenzie said, we'll have an opportunity to work with flow for live scenario modeling, where Commissioners can see changes to the maps being made and the results thereof in real time. We'll also continue to hear, of course, public comment and submissions regarding maps, and I want to continue to encourage the public. Comments and submissions are welcome at any time through our website, drawyourcommunity.com. I also want to note that the State Redistricting Commission, the City Districts Redistricting Commission of California, will be holding visualization meetings in Southern California on November 7th, 8th, and 9th, and continuing to meet virtually in Sacramento throughout November. Several of our other fellow commissions are meeting as well in the greater San Diego area. More information is listed on this slide, but you can also find things on the appropriate websites, including the state commission's website, wedrawthe line ca.org. Thanks again for attending tonight, this meeting is adjourned at 10:01 p.m., thank you.
Stephanie, you're amazed we finished by 10, huh?
Yeah.